Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Waverley Local Committee. As you know, the local committee aims to improve outcomes and value for money for residents, and improve partnership work within the Borough of Waverley. I'm Victoria Young, the chairman of the local committee and the member for Waverley Eastern Villages. Quick housekeeping, the loser through the doors to the side, and the emergency procedure. In the event of an emergency, the building must be evacuated, please exit immediately. And the emergency meeting point is on the green adjacent to the Berries Car Park and the Crown Court Car Park. Councillors and members of the public should accompany me and officers and remain together until the senior officer has accounted for all persons known to be on the premises. So I will now quickly ask everybody, members and officers, to introduce themselves. Shall we start with... Shall we start with Maurice, please?
First by him, Waverley Member for Bramley, Buzzbridge and Hascombe.
Carol Coburn, Waverley Member, Farnham Bourne.
Jim Edwards, Waverley Member, Hazlemere, Pritchmere and Tottenhill.
David Harmer, County Councillor for Waverley Western Villages.
Gerry Hyman, Waverley Member for Farnham Castle.
Andy MacLeod, Surrey Councillor for Farnham Central.
Good morning, Peter Martin, County Councillor for Gottoming South, Milford and Whitley.
Andrew Povey, County Councillor for Cranley and Newhurst.
Penny Rivers, County Councillor representing Gottoming North.
Richard Seaborn, Waverley Member, the other Waverley Member for Bramley, Buzzbridge and Hascombe.
Stephen Spence, County Councillor for Farnham North.
Liz Townsend, Waverley Member for Cranley West.
It's Richard Parkinson, I'm Wast Group Manager at Surrey County Council.
Debbie Prismall, Surrey County Council Countryside Access Officer.
I'm Frank Apicella, I'm the Area Highway Manager for Guildford and Waverley.
Yvette Ortell, Partnership Committee Officer for Surrey County Council, supporting the local committee.
Right, thank you all very much for that. One point I would like to draw to everybody's attention is that from today, the committee will be webcast, so I'd like to thank Waverley Borough Council for facilitating this. Members, when you press the red button and speak, apparently the camera sort of comes on to you, so just be aware of that, please. So now, without further ado, I'm pleased to welcome questions from members of the public. We're a bit pressed for time today, so I can only allocate 15 minutes for this as we've got a very long agenda. So are there any questions from members of the public? Mr Hodgson.
Do you want to come forward?
Yes, please. If you use a microphone.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chairman. For a number of years, I've had to report to Surrey County Council on highways, a problem with vegetation overgrowth, to part of a footway in South Hill, Gottoming, that sits between the car park of Ridgeview Cottages and the end of the back garden to number 71. This plot of land used to belong to Thames Water, but apparently has changed hands. However, SEC will no doubt know the owner. This year, I had to report the severe overgrowth yet again, and was duly informed electronically that the work was carried out. Recently, I had occasion to walk past this area and notice that the cutback was incomplete, and that part of the fencing was hanging across the footway, weighted down with matted vegetation, causing substantial obstruction, requiring pedestrians to walk onto the carriageway to get past. Also, of course, the situation is potentially dangerous, particularly at night. So my questions, Madam Chairman, are, when are Surrey County Council going to make the owners deal with this problem permanently? Why does the higher end inspector not deal with this, both in reporting and checking the work? And who checked the work on this occasion? And how often is South inspected by the highway authority or contractor, and who deals with the reports? Thank you. That is my first question, I'll stop there.
Frank, would you like to say anything, or would you prefer that we give a answer, come back to him separately?
No, I can give a quick answer on that one, Graham. The LHOs inspect those when we get reports, they will send hedge notices to the owners, if they can locate the owners. What we then do is serve notice on the owners, if they don't do anything about the hedge, etc. And we will then carry out the works, if they again carry on doing nothing, and we then recharge them. So if this has recently changed hands, there could be an issue with land ownership, etc., in terms of trying to locate the owner. But that aside, we will still carry out the works and then find out the owner, so hopefully it will be sorted out in the very near future.
Mrs Ames, would you like to ask your question now, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is basically addressed to your good self, because I am very aware, I'm speaking, by the way, as a member of the public, but also as Vice President of the Surrey Association of Local Councils, because there has been many meetings recently, when the whole of the services are being reviewed, across the total spectrum, and the importance of this particular council, doing as it does, it is the one council where the members of the public relate to you directly, both in terms of asking questions and correspondence, and is thus crucial in the whole set-up. I would ask your good self, as there hasn't been a meeting of this council for some time, a full quarter, but the review is going on across the whole of the county council, by each of the local committees, to look at their structure and the way forward, and the ways in which they do relate to the public across the total spectrum. And when you come to item 15 on your agenda for the way forward, I would ask you urgently to recognise this fact, that there hasn't been a review up to now. The statement that we're going to have from the leader of the council shortly, needs to be taken into account, and to call for some form of review across the total structure, so that by the time we come at least to the next meeting, there is something on the agenda as to the way we ought to go forward of our practices, our links across the total spectrum, both in public and with other bodies, as I'm sure you'll understand without me going into further detail, very much recognising the invaluable role of this particular committee, ma'am.
Mrs Ames, I'm not quite sure, I mean, the particular committees that you're referring to, but as regards this committee, we have been looking towards potentially becoming a joint committee, and some work is being done on that. We are, you know, I'm keen that we should move towards that, but that, you know, we need to make sure that we have the right constitution, and that some meaningful powers are devolved to such a committee, and that is sort of going on in the background, and, you know, more details to follow, but it's certainly, you know, on the agenda.
May I just say thank you for that, Madam Chairman, but may I ask it to come forward publicly, as to where you've got to, exactly, in the due process? That would be more than satisfactory.
Well, when we have something substantive and a firm timetable, of course it will come to this committee, you know, when we are ready to bring it. Mr Hodgson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, just a quick one, on the Surrey County Council Consultation on Services, the survey, when I went into that, there was no opportunity, it seemed to me, to be given to promoting our ideas, such as the one I thought about was, as a pensioner, contributing a cost of bus services, so if I went on a bus journey, I could contribute to the cost, even though I have a pass, and do this voluntary or otherwise, but there's no area, it seemed to me, in the survey, to allow such ideas to be introduced. And I wondered if that consultation could be amended, adjusted, to accommodate such thoughts, not just this one, but clearly there could be many others. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that suggestion, I'll certainly pass that to the officers who are looking at the consultation, and let them have that comment, and see whether that can be taken on board. Thank you very much. If you've raised a question today and would like a written answer, please leave your contact details with Yvette, and she will be in touch with you. Everybody is obviously welcome to stay, but anybody who wishes to leave, please feel free to do so. Now, I'm going to continue with the formal agenda of the local committee. First of all, apologies. We haven't received any apologies. Item two, the minutes for approval. Please, could the members agree that the minutes of the 21st of September are accurate?
Agreed.
Thank you. Next item, declarations of interest, does anybody have any...
Matters arising?
No. We haven't got matters arising. We don't have that. At the end, we have the sort of forward programme and any, sort of any other business, but... So declarations of interest, does anybody have a disposable pecuniary interest in respect of any item to be discussed today? Mr Spence.
Item nine, I'm a member of the National Trust, but I intend to remain for the debate as I don't believe it is a substantial interest, but nevertheless, I wish to declare it.
Thank you. I'm also a member of the National Trust, I believe we have others here, could those National Trust members raise your hands, just... Thank you.
I'd like to express an interest in item nine, as I'm a member of Hazelmere Town Council Planning Committee, which has expressed a view on this particular item, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mrs Coburn.
Just to cover all bases, I'm a life member of the National Trust for Scotland, which has reciprocal arrangements with the National Trust, so I think I'd better declare that.
Moving swiftly on, you'll see there's an item on the agenda today regarding Surrey County Council's consultation on service changes, and I would just like to encourage everybody to engage on this. You can go online and have your say. I'd also like to bring to your attention that there is an extra drop-in session in Farnham Library from 10 till 12 on Monday the 17th of December, where officers will be available to answer questions. Good. Now, we'd like to move to item five, I'm very pleased to welcome Tim Oliver, the new leader of Surrey County Council, we're honoured to have you come to us, it will be one of your first visits as leader, who has got a presentation about Surrey County Council policy and matters moving forward. So without further ado, Mr Oliver.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to present to your committee. In fact, this presentation was prepared in my previous role as the portfolio holder for people and for health, and has been a series of presentations around the county, primarily to raise the profile of the health agenda. So it's in that capacity, really, that I present to you this morning. There are, and I appreciate that you have a long agenda today, so I will move as speedily through this as appropriate, really so that I can, we can deal with any questions at the end. Victoria will deal with, pick up the Surrey Hartlands perspective. There are four pieces of work underway, that I think all need to come together. So the first is the Surrey 2030 Vision, I think many of you will have seen the proposals, and indeed since the public consultation, there's much more detail around what that translates into, in terms of the four core principles that sit under it. But that is, so that's one piece of work, where Surrey is very focused on pulling together all of the partnership working, whether that be district and boroughs, the charity, the voluntary and the faith sectors. The second piece of work is the, in the context of health, is the National Health Service 10 Year Plan, which we had expected to have been published by now, but it hasn't been, but is due imminently, I understand. The third is the Government Green Paper on the Integration of Health and Social Care, and again, that's been delayed, as have many other things, in the light of what's been happening in central government for the last few weeks. And then the last one, which is more relevant probably to us, is that we are very near to having concluded a 10-year Surrey Health Plan. Surrey, and we'll deal with this a little bit later, but Surrey has three, let's say, SDPs, Sustainable and Transformation Partnerships, of which Surrey Hartlands is the largest and comprises about 800,000 or so residents of Surrey out of the 1.2 million. But this plan will reflect the county boundary, rather than the NHS boundaries, as they currently exist. So all of those four pieces of work need to align, to come together, to produce the, what will be, I think, 10, the 10 key priorities, health priorities, that need to be delivered. In my previous role, I chaired the Health and Wellbeing Board, and indeed in my current role, will continue to do that. It's hugely important that we drive this agenda forward, and I'll try to explain that a little bit more as we go through. So this sort of sets the scene ready for why I'm here. What this slide shows is that 30% of the determinants of health outcomes, which includes life expectancy, amongst other things, 30% of that is around your own behaviour, whether you smoke, whether you exercise, and so on. But probably the more stark statistic is the 20% of clinical care, so we have a fantastic National Health Service here, but even if it were, and some may say it is the best health service in the world, it can only improve health outcomes by 20%. And that, you know, that's pretty stark in terms of, you know, when you're looking at budgets, budgets for local authorities compared with budgets for the NHS, because the other 50% are factors which local government can influence, and indeed do, particularly the socio-economic factors, and the built environment. And some of the latest slides, which will be circulated with the minutes, just go into a little bit more detail around that. But 20% is around clinical intervention, 50% areas that local authorities can influence, and I'd say 30% in terms of what you do yourselves. And then I've just included a set of slides, which you can have a look at, at your leisure, but just to, just to sort of benchmark a little bit where Surrey sits nationally, Surrey is the green, the green block on that slide. So in terms of this slide about prevalence of overweight children reception, actually Surrey does rather, rather well compare with the national average. Sorry, these slides are not very visible at the back. So Surrey, Surrey is the green, the green block there, which is to the far right-hand side. And then, and then, there we go, as we go through, through the age group, pretty much the same. Then in terms of the five a day, the fruits and vegetables and so on, we then start to move towards the left. And indeed, in terms of walking, and of course, it's a sad reflection of the economics of society, that the wealthier the society, I'm afraid, the less people tend to do by way of physical activity, certainly walking, they tend to jump in their cars, as we all And then, an increasing issue for society generally is around mental health, and particularly in the 16 to 24-year-old category. There's a lot of data on this, and it's really quite scary in terms of the growth of, in terms of mental issues, across our population, and that's partly to do with social isolation and so on, and that needs to be, needs to be addressed, absolutely. Here again, it's just a selection of slides, and anybody that's interested, then there's a whole lot more, if you'd like to see them. So now, this slide, as I've gone round the county, has always surprised people, because I've talked about Waverley on many occasions. As you will see, the life expectancy for males, the highest life expectancy of those living in the ward of Hazelmere East and Grayswood, and the lowest in this case in Epsom. But then, more starkly, on the right-hand side, the life expectancy gap for females is, but in Waverley, you have the highest and the lowest in terms of those two wards, which just, I think, reinforces the fact that many people forget, which is that Surrey is a very diverse county, and that there are genuinely areas of high social deprivation. And we need to make sure, as a county authority and as a borough authority, that we are, we are doing what we can, wherever we can, to support those more vulnerable members of our community. It's not my intention to comment on the consultations, which your chairman has mentioned, but like, I would encourage everybody to look at those consultations, and to read them in full, because inevitably, the headlines that people pick up on are that things, services are being cut. Actually, that isn't the intention. The intention is to look at better ways of delivering those services, and that is absolutely about supporting our vulnerable members of the community. These are, these 10 areas are the biggest cause of illness or death, not surprisingly, tobacco, smoking continues to be the highest, and is a significant cost to society and to the NHS. But as you go down here, some of these are inevitably related, high blood pressure, obesity, which is most definitely on the increase, caused in some cases by lack of physical activity, and then alcohol and so on. So just to reinforce a point, that about the 30% that you as an individual and the public can do in terms of changing their lifestyle and improving their lifestyle, which has a direct impact on life expectancy. And then these next set of slides really start to pick up the local authority aspects. It is, and clearly planning, and we're all, all the district and boroughs are at different stages of their iterations of their local plans, and I'm sure that these sorts of factors have been, have influenced that plan. And, you know, put simplistically, the more that you can create communities that are, where you can, you can walk from your house to the local shops or to the local amenities and so on, the better. It deals with both physical activity, but also around isolation and so on. And you can see here on all of the next four or five slides, what you can do to influence that, and the impact that it has. Housing is a key part of that. At the moment, the, you know, we need to have a drive to create more housing across the county, and that isn't just because the government tell us to do that, that is because there is a genuine need for housing, but it has to be the right type of housing. So you've got two aspects to this. Firstly, to make sure that people's accommodation, particularly the elderly, is suitable, but then also that we are creating truly affordable or social housing wherever we can. And that's, of course, a challenge as a planning authority, where in this county, there is a lot of land which is still designated as green belt, and understandably, people don't want to see that diminished. But we do have to find ways of building the right type of housing, which is generally speaking, I think, more one or two-bedroom units, rather than four or five-bedroom houses, and to make sure that the housing stock that we currently have, and people live in, is suitable for their needs. The food environment, that's self-explanatory, making sure that people can access the right type of food and so on. And the natural and sustainable environment, air quality is, again, is a big issue, there's a much greater awareness now of air quality. Inevitably, that's significantly influenced by the volume of vehicles on the road, that has the, also has the effect of adding to potholes and so on, which is an issue that is dear to all of our hearts, and I hope that with the additional funding that has gone into roads, that we will and are seeing an improvement across the county. But actually, the biggest problem is around, is around vehicles. There has been a national campaign recently to encourage, in particular, vehicles, turning their engines off, or the driver turning their engines off outside of schools. A lot of parents, I'm sure we're all guilty of it, will leave their car idling whilst the child gets in and out, or whatever, and that just adds to air pollution. So it's simple things that we can do, and I'm sure this borough, like everywhere else, is now starting to closely monitor the high areas of poor air quality, and to work with the county to see whether that can be improved. Transport, the more that people can use public transport, the better, no doubt about it, it's more efficient, but that's, there are issues around that as well, in terms of making that accessible, certainly in the rural areas. But actually, cycling routes are an important part of that, and something that we can, we can definitely influence. So really, all of this comes back to, again, to the main driver for the county council, which is about prevention. We recognise, have to recognise, that there are limited financial resources that are available, and those resources need to be absolutely directed to the right area and to the right people. The more that we can do to prevent people, whether it's in a health context or other, but the more we can do to prevent people falling into chronic illness by early intervention, and ideally preventing that from happening in the first place, the better, that's a better outcome for that individual. And that is, that is going to be our focus completely, as we move forward, to make sure that the right people are accessing the right services, and that if we can't prevent, prevent problems, that we deal with them at a much earlier stage. We're just going to focus now, with Victoria, on, if you like, the NHS structure, and what Surrey Hartlands is doing as an organisation. I mean, it's, Surrey Hartlands was set up as part of the reorganisation of the NHS, and as I said earlier, it covers 800,000 or so of our residents. It is unfortunate, and if we, if we had a choice, we would definitely wish to have an NHS system that reflected the county, so that there was consistency in the way in which those services were delivered. I think there may be some further discussions shortly around the East Surrey part, the Surrey CCG, but as it stands at the moment... But as it stands at the moment, that is how we are structured. But as I started by saying, going forward, we will have, early in the new year, a Surrey-wide health plan with the ten or so key health priorities. The Health and Wellbeing Board is being reconstituted, not only just to include representation from local government and the NHS, but also other organisations that can impact on some of the things that I've mentioned earlier. So we will have representation from the Surrey Chief Housing Officers, we'll have the University of Surrey, we'll have the Local Enterprise Partnerships. So it will become effectively a public services board, and I would hope that we would have in the room at the same time all of the key partners that can help deliver those priorities as we go forward. So at this point, conscious of time, I'm going to hand over to Victoria, who will just give you a little bit more flavour about Surrey Heartlands, and then they will both be happy to take questions afterwards.
Thank you, Tim. Hi, I'm Victoria Berry. I'm the Policy and Programme Manager at Surrey County Council, and I'm delighted to be here today to tell you more about the important work that we're doing at Surrey Heartlands. And... Yes. Is that better? Yes, sorry. So we're all too familiar with the impact of austerity in local government with reduced funding, demand for more services, improved services, and also workforce challenges. As well as this, the population is changing. We're living longer, but we want our residents to live longer, being healthy and independent, and only coming for services when they need them and knowing that they can have the services that they require to meet their needs. At Surrey Heartlands, we believe that we need to work differently to overcome this. Austerity is no different for the NHS. They're also feeling the impact, and therefore, how can we overcome this together? We're all in the same boat. Is there a way that we can work collaboratively with our health and care organisations, as well as with residents, to improve the health and care for local people? At Surrey Heartlands, as Tim has said, it serves about eight hundred and fifty thousand residents. This is about two-thirds of the County of Surrey. And we have eleven partners. At the moment, it's very much a partnership of the willing, so those that want to come forward to input and improve the health, we're very much an open door, and everyone's invited to the table. Surrey County Council is a partner, as well as three clinical commissioning groups, eight GP-led localities, and four acute hospitals. So we think there's three elements that really set us apart from the other integrated care systems in the UK. So firstly, Surrey Heartlands is one of two devolution areas. This means that we can make decisions much more locally, whereas traditionally, it's been more central government, because we believe that we know our residents, and it should be a place-based decision-making process with the resident at the centre of all decision-making. This also means that we can unlock and explore links between health and wellbeing and also economic growth within our area. We're also very proud of our Clinical Academy, and this is where we bring together our clinicians within the area with officers and other voluntary sector, community providers, district and boroughs, to have open conversations about the challenges that we face and to overcome these barriers together. As well as this, we have an award-winning citizen-led engagement and communications work stream. And we're particularly proud of our Citizen Ambassador Programme, which is where we have eleven citizen ambassadors, who are members of the public. They come from a variety of different backgrounds, and they have a particular interest or focus on one of the work streams, so, for example, mental health. And this resident is invited to all of the meetings. So the programme boards to input, and they feed back their thoughts and are really core to the development of that work stream. So this is a set of our priorities. But as Tim has said, we are refreshing the ten-year strategy, which is going to come in place in the new year. So this is subject to change. But nonetheless, the national priorities will always be there: mental health, cancer, urgent care, primary care, diabetes, and continuing healthcare. And we've got a number of various innovative programmes underway to improve these areas for residents. And in the new year, these will potentially change, but it's an exciting opportunity to feed into that development. So I'll just skip on in the interest of time. I'd like to point out that this is very much a place-based approach. At Surrey Heartlands, we have three integrated care partnerships. So for this area, it will be Guildford and Waverley Integrated Care Partnership, which is an alliance of local health and care organisations, including the CCGs, yourselves, Guildford Borough Council, around the table to develop local plans for residents. So I'll leave it there, and I'd like to welcome, invite any questions that you may have for myself or Tim with regards to the wider determinants of health or Surrey Heartlands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that interesting and informative presentation. First of all, I would just like to ask, one of the perennial things I am moaned at about is the general difficulty people have in getting appointments with GPs. And what sort of powers or manners you have of encouraging there being more GP appointments available or more practices available, because this does seem to be a perennial problem.
Indeed. I mean, now, you should be able to access a GP appointment from eight in the morning till eight in the evening, seven days a week, either at your own practice or one that's nearby. It is, it is a problem, it is a continuing problem. And the general sort of direction of travel, though, for the NHS is to look at creating urgent treatment centres. So that's, some of that will pick up residents that would normally go to their GP, but actually, it's primarily focused on reducing the numbers of people going to A and E. So these urgent treatment centres will be dotted around the county, and that's a piece of work that's underway now to look to see where those suitable locations are. And they will have pretty much all of the same facilities as A and E. So I think, you know, what we don't want to do is get to the situation where it is in London, where a lot of people don't even bother to register with GPs, they go straight to their A and E. So the, on the Heartlands, sorry, on the Health and Wellbeing Board, going forward, primary care will be represented, which hasn't been up till now. And exactly those sorts of issues, we will work with them to see how people can genuinely access an appointment when they want to, rather than, you know, having to wait often days.
Or weeks. Thank you. Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman. I was interested in the percentages in terms of the different factors around health outcomes. So, you know, thirty percent home behaviour, forty percent socio-economic, et cetera. So I just wondered where those percentages are derived from, and are they national or are they local? Would they expect to vary around the country?
No, those are national statistics. So, I mean, there will be variances around the country, but those are national figures. From central government, I mean, there will be a mixture of departments that will have added to that, but those are, those are compiled nationally.
Peter.
Thank you. A very interesting presentation. Could I just ask about the issue of shared budgets between adult social care and the NHS? And to what extent is that happening? And making sure that we have a sort of seamless relationship and ensuring that we don't have any bed-blocking, which was, has been a very controversial and difficult area for many years.
It's a very apposite question. The, what we have been working towards is entering into a so-called Section 75 agreement with all of the CCGs, where we agreed that we will pool budgets. Now, we have been working on the basis that this current financial year, that they would be shadow budgets, so there would be no risk-sharing. We have been waiting for the publication of the NHS ten-year plan. And so where we're at is that at the moment, we haven't got to that point where those budgets are being shared. I think what will happen is, in view of the work that we're doing around our own plan and on the basis that we will see the ten-year plan imminently, we will actually go straight into a situation where we do risk-share. So there will be genuine sharing of those budgets. You know, we need to make sure, obviously from a county perspective, that what our funds are being used appropriately. But this is all about having a genuinely integrated structure around health and social care. And at the moment, that, there's no, that, I don't think things are particularly well-aligned. I think what will focus the minds more clearly is if there is proper budget-sharing. So we will, I think we will get to that point, hopefully, from the beginning of the next financial year.
Thank you, Mr MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. At Waverley, our Community Wellbeing Committee set up a task group to look into the health inequalities issue, the fact that there is approximately ten years difference in life inspections between deprived areas and the average areas in Waverley. And a very good report was produced, and we actually, the research looked into all that, came up with all the similar figures to you've presented. And the fact that, in fact, we were told that thirty percent of health outcomes were dependent on national health, and a great deal of health outcomes were dependent on the things that local authorities do, particularly borough councils, particularly in the prevention area. And we produced reports that actually are going to be acted on at Waverley. The executive has taken on that health issues are now going to be part of every key decision that the council takes. But there is a fundamental problem that there's no specific funding, actually, for this for local authorities, despite the fact that local authorities have this responsibility for trying to help people's public health, and Surrey has. And incidentally, we've got a great deal of help from Surrey and the public health team at Surrey. But I guess my question is, does government recognise, or can we do anything to make government recognise the important issue that the part that local authorities, particularly district and borough councils, play in health and prevention issue? Can anything be done about that? Because it doesn't really seem to be properly recognised at central government.
Well, dealing with the broader point, I mean, I've read your, the report of that working group, and it was very, very good, very good indeed. And in fact, it will be on the agenda for the Health and Wellbeing Board on the seventh of February, so that can be shared with the rest of the board. I think, I think that addressing that point about partnership working is key. Ignoring the funding from government, I think we have to work within the existing financial envelope that we have. What we can do, and the reason for extending the membership of the Health and Wellbeing Board is to look at ways in which all of the key partners can help deliver these priorities. So just on a practical level, each of the priorities will have a lead organisation. It may be around housing, in which case the housing representative will take that forward. Some of it will be around infrastructure, in which case it may be that the Local Enterprise Partnership can contribute and so on. So I think, I think the key, the key focus for me is to have all of the partners, and the district and boroughs are key to that, working together and to make the best use of the funding that we have. And that may well see a shift of some of that fund from one area to another. So I think that would be the priority. Certainly, we'll continue to work with central government to see if there's any more money available. But there are things we can do on our own.
Thank you, Mrs Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've got a couple of questions. One is about, when I see these presentations, and it was a very good presentation, I do get a little bit worried about layer upon layer upon layer of people working together, partnership. You know, I'm very much a doer rather than a talker, and it does frighten me sometimes when we see this, because I think ninety percent of what you showed us, we know. You know, we're aware of the issue, it's how we tackle it that's the problem. I always think of Aristotle with this, "Give me a child at seven and I'll give you a man." And so much of this is instilled in young children, isn't it? I mean, you know, we have to get into families and into children very early, because really, by the time they're into their bad habits at ten plus, we're really on a hiding to nothing trying to correct them. And I do think any intervention is important, and we've got to get into these families. And the other thing, wearing my governor of King Ed's in Whitley hat, I'm very aware of mental health and the issues that we have there. And especially with social media, you mention isolation, but it's partly isolation because of the lifestyle of these children, who just don't go out and do the normal things, kicking balls and talking to people. So I would urge, and I would seek your views on, what we're going to do about the children mental health system, which has actually been struggling, you know, it's been very difficult to get access to mental health provision for students, children recently. And I think that, again, is an area that's going to only get worse. I'd just like to hear your views on that. Thank you very much.
You're absolutely right in terms of those early years. I think there is, the first thousand days, I think, of a child's life are considered to be the most important. And that's where we need to focus our energies and efforts, both as local authorities but also as the NHS. In terms of isolation and the CAMHS contract, again, I think it's, the sixteen, I think there's increasing recognition that there are mental health issues for that younger generation. And I don't think that's necessarily been an area of focus over recent years. I mean, yesterday, I was with the Walton Charity, who have established a hub for other charities, voluntary organisations. So there's something like ten or twelve within the building. And one of those was RELATE. And RELATE don't just do marriage guidance counselling, they also actively get involved in mental health issues for younger children. And I think that's what we need to look at. We need to, we need to work with the voluntary sector and with the charitable sector, who do an enormous amount of work within these sorts of areas. And that isn't about trying to cost-shunt, it's about, you know, pulling together all of that resource and all of that good work that is done. And I agree with you. I mean, when you look at some of the, just some of the charts of the number of organisations that are involved in all of this, it needs consolidating, we need to simplify the structures and so on. And I think that, once we've got a health plan, then we can work on, and will work on that, so that we're making sure that, A, that the right organisations are involved, but equally that we've got a much simplified structure.
Thank you, Mr Hyman.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just something that Victoria, the other Victoria Berry, we have a Victoria line in front of us today, a brace of Victorias for Christmas, very lucky. If we've, Surrey Heartlands, obviously, that covers two-thirds of Surrey residents and two-thirds actually also of Waverley residents, I think. You were talking about devolution, or some form of devolution that gives Surrey Heartlands an advantage. Does that also apply to, because a third of Waverley's residents are under the North East Hans and Farham Care Commissioning Group, so aren't Heartlands as such, I think. Are the advantages of devolution that you were talking about, do they... Are the advantages of devolution that you were talking about, do they apply to Farnham CCG or not, or would they be available and how? Or is that something perhaps I should take outside of the meeting in order to understand it better? Because I didn't fully understand the advantages you were saying that Heartlands had from the devolution. Is there an easy answer? Can Farnham, does Farnham have those same advantages, or can it have, or shall we take that outside the meeting? Thanks.
Can we, can we take that, that outside, outside of the meeting? I mean, the, the, the answer is that that's what we absolutely hope will happen and tend to happen, that the, the devolution, I mean, Surrey Heartlands is, is at the forefront of those devolution conversations along with, with Greater Manchester. At the moment, it is more challenging in having three SDPs. But there is, there is a close relationship with, with Frimley and, and increasingly with, with East Surrey and Sussex. So, so the, the, we want to have, as a county council and as district and borough councils, we want to make sure that, that all of those benefits, you know, are there for all of our residents. So, so I think the answer to your question is, is broadly yes, but inevitably there are some small complications in, in achieving that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Tim and Victoria, very much for coming. There's nothing else for you to say, I think. So we shall now move on with our agenda. So turning to item six, petitions, we have received two petitions. Is councillor Hess present? Yes. So you have up to three minutes to speak on each petition.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, officers and councillors. My name is George Hess and I'm Farnham, one of two Farnham Town councillors for Castle Ward in Farnham. This concerns a petition signed by concerned residents who use the Cronwall Lane and West Street junction in Farnham every day. The petition reads, "We, the undersigned, do petition Surrey County Council's Waverley Local Committee to instruct its highways department to urgently reconsider its position concerning a new mini roundabout at the West Street and Cronwall Lane junction, in light of the hundred and twenty new houses at Hopfield, which will soon be under construction, which will lead to greater congestion and danger at this junction. We believe it is absolutely necessary to build this as soon as possible with associated landscaping before the houses are completed." So I've read the response. Thank you very much for the response. The petitioners won't agree with Surrey County Council highways conclusions that in fact actually constructing a mini roundabout would significantly increase the curbing delay on West Street. I don't actually live up Cronwall Lane, but all the people who've signed this petition do, so I have to defer to their greater local, local knowledge, and I'm, I'm purely representing their interests here. So I, I can only say that I don't think they'll accept the response. But however, in the summary, suggesting that the mini roundabout would reduce overall junction performance in peak periods, well, I'm not a traffic flow specialist, so to some extent I have to defer to the people that do the analysis. So what I would like to propose, if agreeable, is a meeting with the county councillor for the area, Mr Andy MacLeod, and Mr Apicella in February, to discuss some possible alternatives.
Thank you very much. You've obviously seen the response, which is, you know, the, if you like, scientific response from the so-called experts. I appreciate your residents may not agree with it. Frank, do you wish, I think Frank's happy to have a meeting if that'd be helpful. I'm also so conscious though that this is the second time that this same matter has been to this committee, and we have spent an enormous amount of time on it. So, you know, in, in our sort of straitened circumstances, I do think there has to be a limit to the amount of resources devoted to one single matter.
Yes, I, I, I totally agree. In terms of the, the scientific response, as you'll appreciate, any roundabout at, at any junction is, is a change, and the highway code does categorically say that at any roundabout you give way to your right. So what you're in actual fact doing when you're introducing a roundabout is changing the priorities. So any vehicle egressing now from that junction would have priority over the main road. So you do have that change in priorities, which then does cause congestion on the main road. So it may not appear in the first instance that it would have a major change, but roundabouts do actually change the priorities and actually create more traffic. They do also create more accidents, because unless the arms have a equal flow on them, then drivers driving along the main road may not always appreciate that there is a junction coming out of it, and they get very used to and accustomed to driving along the road and there's nobody coming out of the junction. When they do, there's more risk of an accident. That's, that's more the scientific element, but yes, quite happy to meet on site and discuss that.
Right, thank you. Mr Edwards wanted to say something.
Thank you, Chair. I think just meet on site and, and you need to convince the residents and get it put to bed, basically. Thanks.
Mr MacLeod, as the local member?
Thank you, Chair. If I can just comment briefly, I, I think we have to accept the, the views of the professionals on this, that a mini roundabout wouldn't help. I'd just like to point out that I did attend the meeting of the Residents' Association, and Cronwall Lane is a very difficult road, actually. It's meant to be a country lane, but it's a very well-used road, and it is very difficult to get in and out of Cronwall Lane at the junction with West Street. And very sadly, a point in relation to the use of this road, there was a very serious accident in Cronwall Lane, which was reported in the Farnham Herald this week, and someone was killed by a hit-and-run driver, who I believe, who's now been arrested. And, you know, this is the sort of thing that adds to the feeling about the problems of that, of that road. But I think Frank is right, that we, we need to, we did have a brief discussion before the meeting between George, Frank and myself. We, we do need to see how changes in this area fit into the overall problems that are happening in Farnham. There's so many changes going on in Farnham right now to do with our road system. So all I'm saying, in, in all, in, in all that, with the Jeremy Hunt project, with all the things that are happening with the Woolmead and, and the Brightwells project, we do need to make sure we take this, this into consideration with all the, all the other things we have to worry about, and we will do. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you very much. I'll pass that to Frank to arrange a meeting with you and Mr Hess and residents in February, and we'll hope that that can reach some resolution. Yes, of course, thank you very much. Right, councillor Hess, I think you've got a second petition now.
Yes, I'm presenting a petition today gathered together and signed by residents of Mead Lane in Farnham, which is a turning off West Street. The petition reads, "We, the undersigned, do petition Surrey County Council's Waverley Local Committee to instruct its highways department to prioritise the resurfacing of Mead Lane from West Street down to the cottages, which is the southern boundary of Surrey County highways adoption, and to provide drainage for water that floods the bottom of Mead Lane when it rains, adjacent to the Farnham Town Football Club entrance as a matter of urgency." And I would like to put in here, please, at the request of residents, to substitute the word pooling instead of flooding. Flooding sounds more serious, because actually the water forms a large pool there after rainfall. So the Surrey Highway summary that I've read suggests that the defects in the roadway have been noted, and I hope that resurfacing could be considered for 2019, or at least put on the list, particularly in consideration of the importance of a presentable entrance to Farnham Town Football Club for teams and visitors. You know, I think it's important that it looks presentable, quite frankly, and I'd like to give the residents a decent approach to their homes, instead of the patchwork of repairs that they currently have to live with. I'm very interested to see a low gully frame has been ordered for adjustment. Could Frank possibly explain what this is and how this will allow the water to flow across the road and away?
Thank you. Yes, the, the inspector attended site, he couldn't find any defects that were of a, of a nature that needed immediate attention. However, he did find this gully that was possibly not located in the best location near the entrance to the sports ground, and he has ordered a new gully grating and frame to ensure that it is located in a more appropriate location that will hopefully alleviate the pooling effect that you're currently enduring.
Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. So now we move to items, oh, sorry.
Sorry, the item I wanted to raise under the minutes is actually a petition, that's one that's not here.
Okay.
There, there was a petition that came to the last meeting about Alma Way in Farnham North, and a response was supposed to be given to this meeting, but there isn't one. So I wondered what had happened to that?
It's in the parking report, which we're coming to as item eleven, I think it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on then to written questions. We've had four questions. First one, on there on the green sheets with their answers. The first one from councillor Hess, you see his, you've got the response there. Would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you. My thanks to Frank Apicella for his answer to my written question concerning the resurfacing of the borough in Farnham. And I appreciate it's clearly a priority project which will hearten the residents and visitors to our fine town, who use the currently pretty atrocious major thoroughfare. In fact, I was talking to somebody last night, a very senior councillor for Waverley, and her partner who rides motorbikes won't go down the borough, it's so bad. So could Frank be a little bit more explicit as to when in 2019 the road will be resurfaced? As we can't wait for the 2019 winter damage maintenance programme, it really needs to be dealt with a lot sooner. Thank you.
I don't have an exact date at the moment. Obviously, it will be determined by our streetworks team. They will need to coordinate with other openings on the carriageway, other utility companies, et cetera, and programme the whole thing holistically. So at this moment in time, we don't have the programme, but it will be, hopefully, quite early on in the new financial year.
Excellent. Could I just put in very quickly, I'd like to thank Michael, I think his name is pronounced Lajuka, he's the Surrey County Council Local Highways Officer. I'd like to thank him for his responsive and conscientious work in the Farnham area. I think he's an excellent, excellent member of your team. And I'd also like to wish all here today a happy Christmas.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your kind comments about the local highways officer. I'm sure those are passed on. We appreciate your concerns about the state of the roads in Farnham. I think all councillors here would be able to list many roads in their areas which are equally in need of attention. So, thank you, but I think we've, we've heard a good deal about them.
Thank you for coming. It's the conservation area, we're not asking you to resurface the whole of Farnham at the moment, we, we'd like that in time, but really the conservation area is an absolute disgrace at the moment. And as I've said in this chamber before, Surrey signed up to the Farnham Conservation Area Management Plan, at which we are supposed to be doing impeccable work in the town centre. So I do back what councillor Hess is saying there, but we are only talking about the conservation area at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr Edwards.
A quick one, Chair. The, I totally agree with my fellow councillor there. I'm not a Farnham representative, but I was there last night and I entirely agree with what's been said. Thank you.
Okay, right. Now you now have a joint question from councillors Andrew Bolton and Paul Follows. Follows, I'm so sorry. Gentlemen, would you, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, we do, and my colleague, remember, is called Paul Follows. The, the answer given by the officers doesn't quite meet our expectations, and I would like, this is a joint effort, and I'd like my colleague to carry on the question, the answer to your question. Thank you.
Yes, we did just want to stress that we have taken the unusual stance of cooperating despite our differing parties on this, just to show the level of feeling we have. Particularly, the supplementary is regarding the monitoring that was identified, or certainly inferred in the last paragraph. So we'd just like to actually understand what, if any, monitoring has actually taken place already on this, and if there is such monitoring, whether there's been any reporting. And if there hasn't been any monitoring, could we kick that off formally so that we can track this issue going forward? I don't believe there's anything else to add.
Just clarity, especially who is doing the monitoring? Who is being expected to do this monitoring? Thank you.
Thank you. The parking officer isn't actually here yet, so we'll come back to you separately on those points, because we don't have that information to hand. If you wish to stay, I'm expecting the parking officer to come, because we do have a parking item on the agenda, and I'd be happy to look at it then briefly with him if...
Firstly, thank you, and I'll also submit it in writing to Avette so that we can follow it up. Thank you.
Right, now we move on to Martin Price. Mr Price, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I should say first my question is on behalf of the Frith Hill Area Residents' Association. Thank you, Mr Roberts, in his absence. I'm disappointed with the result, and I just hope there is no accident at this spot before double-lane lines are installed, if approved under item eleven. Particularly a fatal accident, because that, the twenty mile an hour each way, forty mile an hour head-on speed could be fatal, particularly for children. But I, I'd like to extend my question, over the longer time period, exactly a year ago, I asked a question about planning for the future, and I'm talking about the sort of five to ten-year future really, regarding parking close to Godling and Farncombe stations. The borough councils are authorising more and more housing, and thus generating more and more commuters, and Surrey have to deal with the consequences in parking. And I'm not talking about inconvenience parking here, I'm talking about parking that's a real danger to motorists. And if a car does take evasive action, possibly to pedestrians as well. Last year, both councillors, Peter Martin and Penny Rivers, responded, but I don't think any borough councillor did, which is perhaps not surprising, because there weren't any Godling borough councillors on this committee a year ago. But I do note now that councillor Nick Williams from the area is on this committee. I've engaged with councillors Tony Gordon Smith and Stephen Reynolds on this issue this autumn. But my question is, what progress has been made in discussions between the two councils on dealing with the long-term parking issues around these stations?
Thank you. I have to say that your supplementary does need to relate to the original question, which relates to Frith Hill Road.
Well, it does very much relate to Frith Hill Road.
Okay, fine. Frank, do you have any comments to make on this? Or we'll get back to him with a written answer.
I think probably best to get back to you. Our transportation development planning team do attempt to take on board, when developments come, in all the issues and problems that could arise, including parking. Parking is obviously a problem that we're always faced with, either at the beginning of any development or following development, or generally, we always have parking problems. Believe it or not, under the Highways Act, there is no right to park on the public highway. It is a privilege, if you like, or it is something that we accommodate for as long as it can be done so safely. Once safety becomes an issue, the only tool we have in our armoury are waiting restrictions. And unfortunately, with vehicle usage in the South East and with that increasing, it is an ongoing problem, which is why this committee has to look at parking restrictions on a very regular basis. That's sort of more holistic thing, but hopefully, Jack will be able to give us some more detailed responses and along with possibly our transportation development planning colleagues with a view to the sort of planning element of it.
Thank you. Mr Martin?
Thank you. Could I just say that I do sympathise with Mr Price's request, but of course, we've all got restrictions that we would like to see done very quickly for the same reason. So, I've got some sympathy, but of course, we've all got, as we'll see in section 11, or our agenda item 11, all of the different parking restrictions or double yellow lines requests that we've made over the last year or so. I think just on the general point that he's made, this committee, three, four years ago, spent a tremendous amount of time on the subject of parking in the Farncombe area and around the station in particular. And I think we had hours and hours and hours of debate, and some changes, and also there were surveys done, questions asked, and in the end, no parking restriction generally were introduced in the Farncombe station area, for instance, but considerable changes were made in the central area, Croft Road and that sort of area, which is also not Farncombe, I realise, but it's also part of what is now Mrs Rivers' area. So I think it's a little unfair to say that this committee hasn't attempted to address it. It's certainly discussed it a great deal.
Thank you. So, Mr Price, Yvette will be in touch with you with a written response to your further question. And then lastly, written questions, Janet Crowe. Thank you. Would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'm very grateful to Mr Roberts for taking this as seriously as he obviously has, and that double yellow lines are being proposed in the street, Wanish, at the locations specified. My supplementary question really is, what is the process now? If they're being proposed, what happens next? If I'm able to have an answer.
Well, assuming that they are approved today, they then move forward through a period of advertisement, and they have to be advertised for a statutory period, which Mr Capocello will hopefully help me by telling me how long it is. Four to six weeks, and then after that, if that's approved, the lines are then installed. However, the installing of the lines does often take quite a long time because there is one team who tries to group work in a similar area together. So realistically, the lines might not be in place for probably another six months, I would suggest.
Thank you.
Right, written member questions. We've not received any written member questions. So, we will move to item nine, the rights-of-way issue. The cattle grid licence request at Hindhead Common. Members of the public, a rights-of-way application has different rules for public engagement. In fact, we don't have any people registered to speak, do we? So there won't be any additional speakers today. Members may, of course, question the officer. So I would like to welcome Debbie Prismal, who will present the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the National Trust has applied under the Highways Act for an agreement for them to be able to install cattle grids with bypass gates on six boats, byways open to all traffic on Hindhead Common. Initial consultation has been carried out in accordance with the legislation. Two objections were made, as set out in my report, in section 1.8. Following correspondence with those people, it's hoped that their concerns have now been addressed. The National Trust has agreed to undertake and pay for all the works involved in installing and maintaining the structures in the future. It would allow them to install fencing on Hindhead Common to increase the conservation grazing that they're currently undertaking in other areas with cattle and ponies. So the recommendation is that a notice be published in accordance with the regulations under the Highways Act. If there are no objections, the cattle grids and bypasses may be installed, and the county council will enter into an agreement with the National Trust. If objections are received, they'll be forwarded to the Secretary of State for determination. Thank you.
Do any members wish to raise any questions? So, the recommendation, the local committee, Waverley, is asked to agree that, number one, a notice be published and displayed pursuant to section 82.4 and 82.5 and schedule 10 of the Highways Act 1980 relating to the installation of cattle grids and bypasses on boats 21A Hazelmeir and 500, 501, 502, 503 Thursley, as shown on drawing number 3, stroke 1, stroke 14, H50A, for a statutory period of not less than 28 days for objections and representations to be made. If there are no objections, the cattle grids and bypasses may be installed. If objections are received, that they are forwarded to the Secretary of State for determination. And number two, officers negotiate and enter into an agreement with the National Trust in pursuance of the powers in section 87 of the Highways Act 1980. Please, may I have a show of hands, first of all, for those for the recommendation? Thank you. Show of hands for anyone against the recommendation? I don't believe there is anybody, and anybody abstaining? Thank you very much. That is carried. Now, item 10, the Surrey County Council Consultation on Service Changes in Waverley. You will have had the papers relating to this, which start on page 31, of those with paper copies. I'm delighted to welcome Mary, who is able to answer any questions, and, sorry, and Richard Parkinson, if members would like to ask them any particular questions. Thank you. Mr Povey?
Chairman, I think the consultation around the recycling centre in Cranley is one that has produced a lot of emails, and understandably, because it is such a long way to an alternative, i.e. the alternative is being posed as Whitely, which depending on where you live within my division is either seven to nine miles away, which is way beyond the recommendations from DEFRA. And I think the other reason that is exercising my residence is that the amount of house building within Cranley itself will increase the population by approximately one-third, and if the Dunstfold Park development goes ahead, the local population will double. So, I would like an officer's response on those two points.
Thank you. Probably worth just setting a bit of context, actually, in terms of the use of the centres and how that's changed over the past few years. So, if you look back to 2015, 16, we dealt with something like about 140,000 tonnes of waste at our community recycling centres. This year, we're projecting about 83,000 tonnes, and that's partly as a result of the changes that we've made. This isn't the first round of proposals, as you'd be aware. We're probably into our third year of changes now, and we're pretty well near the bottom of the barrel, I think. So, you know, we land in the spot where we end up with proposing closures of sites really, because we've pretty well done everything else. Absolutely, in terms of the ability of other sites to absorb waste, then we're confident those alternative sites do have the ability, partly because of the massive reduction in waste we've seen over the past three years, but also, you know, a site like Whitely has been built, and it can handle quite a bit more waste than it's handling at the moment. It's a modern split-level site. But we do accept, you know, that actually reducing the network, that will mean that people will have to drive further. But, as I say, this is a consultation. No decisions have been made yet. So, you know, it's really getting everybody's views at this point in time. And certainly, in terms of growth in housing, that's an absolutely valid point to put forward as well.
Thank you. Mrs Rivers?
Thank you, Chair. My question really is about the children's centres, and surely, two children's centres to serve 124,000 residents of Waverley cannot be enough. My particular question is about the excellent Wharf Nursery School. Will it be closed, leaving only its satellite at Green Oak to offer the satellite proposed and offering fewer services there? And in addition to that question, how will those in need get to Lowesley Fields Children's Centre when 13% of Surrey households have no access to cars? And what will children's centres, closed children's centres, become?
Could I just invite you to maybe to come and sit up here, which would be easier then for everybody to see you?
Chairman, beg your pardon, this is quite a big subject here, and I think a lot of people will have a lot to say. Rather than answering one at a time, it would perhaps be better to find out anybody who's got something to say on this and answer them in one go. Otherwise, we're going to be here all day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, as we're on Mrs Rivers, who has a question on children's centres, does anybody else want to ask specifically on children's centres? Right. Well, I tell you, I will go around the table. If you could briefly put your questions on children's centres, and then the officers come back and answer on children's centres. So, Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chair. I thought I'd understood the reason we wanted to close some of the children's centres was about the fact that we thought we could deliver the service physically in the area without the buildings. But the more I hear from people that actually use the services, the more they talk about the fact that they physically go to the building. That's where it happens. Clearly, we could, I suppose, go to people's homes, but the chaos then of trying to keep appointments with people, with young children that almost have all sorts of divergences, seems massive. And of course, we've had our staff travelling out. Please, could somebody justify the logic to closing a centre when there's clearly demand in an area?
Yes, I rather agree with that, but my understanding is that there will be outreach, say, to Cranley, which will not have a centre, and that that would take place at perhaps a church hall or something like that, so that it's not a building that would be owned or particularly rented full-time by the council. But I'm confused as to how that sort of approach fits in with what I understand will be staff reductions within the children's service.
Mr Martin?
Thank you. Yes, I visited the consultation room in Godling a couple of days ago, and it was very helpful to talk to many of the people there. On the subject of children's centres, I was the portfolio holder for education when all of the children's centres were rolled out some 10 years ago, a very ambitious programme which was put into effect very quickly. It is sad to see the proposals that many will close. The important thing that I would like to emphasise is we've got to ensure that those who really need the services which the children's centres offer do continue to receive them. In other words, what we're doing now, as I understand it, is better targeting to make sure those people who really need the services of the children's centres are looked after, and it's that assurance that I would seek. Thank you.
Mr MacLeod?
Thank you, Chairman. With my colleague Stephen Spence, we've visited the two children's centres in Farnham. And the first comment I'd like to make is that they are extremely good centres, and Surrey should actually be proud of them, actually. They're very, very good centres. But my concern is that this consultation is demoralising the staff there. They don't actually understand what's going on and what you're trying to do. This consultation, the exercise, has been going on for almost a year in one form or another, and the staff just still don't understand what's happening and why you're trying to do it. So that's the thing that concerns me. They're very good centres, you should be proud of. And if we're going to change it, we need to most of all make sure the staff understand why you're changing and why you're doing it. And I think, actually, I don't really understand either precisely what you're trying to do. So I think there's a big problem with this particular consultation.
Thank you. Mr Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm on the advisory board at the Tennyson Shawstart in Hazelmeir. And our latest data shows that 850 children under the age of five living in our reach, and 88% of those have accessed the service from the Shawstart Centre. Now, it's very easy to assume that these centres, you know, are based where they are because of the economic, social group that may exist in that area. But this is not actually 100% correct. They tackle issues like domestic abuse, substance misuse, postnatal depression, and it pays no respect to any income when you have those sort of issues. And really, in Hazelmeir, we're not going to have anything. We haven't got a satellite, we've got nothing. We've got a fantastic centre there, which has come on leaps and bounds since I first got involved. Nothing to do with me, but with the team, they've worked at it, and they've done a great job. And to abandon Hazelmeir and those people that really need that support is unacceptable, and I can't accept it. It's not right. We need to think of doing things in better ways, and I agree. But just to abandon things is crazy, and I just can't understand it. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Mrs Coburn, did you wish to speak on children?
I wasn't. I originally indicated, no, no, I would like to say something on children, just to ask whether you're actually tying this up with the wonderful health and wellbeing presentation we had earlier. You know, we need some joined-up thinking on this. Either we want intervention earlier on, which is what the children's centres provide, and, you know, people say in the east of the borough, the population's growing. Well, believe you me, in the west, it's growing equally with our housing and the amount we've already got. So the demand is only going to get greater. And it does worry me when we're thinking of shutting down something that really works in a town of the size of Farnham, when we've got problems with all the other issues that came up under the first presentation, just whether or not that really is the best use of resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to answer some of those questions, please?
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for inviting me here this morning. My name is Mary Berger, and I'm Assistant Director for Systems and Transformation in Education, Lifelong Learning and Culture. And I can speak with some knowledge to the children's centres consultation, although I'm not directly leading that consultation. And I can also answer your questions around special educational needs and disabilities and libraries, which are more closely tied to my day-to-day work. There were a lot of issues raised in those questions from all councillors, members in the room, and I'll try to go through those in turn. I've noted them... I've noted them down. If I miss over any, it's unintentional, and I'll come back to it. But I do want to start by setting some context around this. And that is fundamentally, children's services in Surrey are inadequate. They are failing our most vulnerable children. And they have consistently been failing our most vulnerable children for quite a long time. So if we continue to do what we're doing now, we will continue to have the same outcomes for our children. And that's not something that the County Council is alone, you know, responsible for. It's everyone in this room and beyond. So we have to set that right firmly in front of us. What we are proposing to do is about addressing some of those fundamental failures in our system. We know that our partnership working isn't, is it working? We know that our MASH is under a multi-agency safeguarding hub, which is where our referrals come in, is completely inundated. We know that our assessments aren't accurate and appropriate. So it's failings at every point in the system. So I will set that into context. Our consultation around children's centres is part of a consultation, a reshaping around our family safeguarding approach, which is a tried-and-tested approach that has worked in other places, which is predicated around some fundamental beliefs. One is that children are best protected, they get the best outcomes, if wherever possible, they can remain in their families. And a child protection offer that takes children into care in the first instance isn't the right approach. So we are looking at family resilience, we're looking at how we build support around our most vulnerable families, and how we keep children wherever possible in those families. When we come on to children's centres, as Mr Martin quite rightly points out, it's a model that was rolled out quite a few years ago. The Shore Start Children's Centres rolled out across the country. Other places have reshaped their children's centres model in a way, in a different way, in a more targeted way. Surrey has not yet. And in light of our need both to make sure that we reach the most vulnerable children and, let's be honest, to spend the limited money that we have more effectively, we are looking at not simply changing the building footprint of children's centre, but changing, fundamentally changing, the service delivery model. So as councillors have rightly pointed out, we are looking at some buildings, some children's centres located in what we know are communities where we have a greater proportion of children who have needs. And we've used the ADACI index, which I had to look it up to remember what it stood for. It's the Income Deprivation Affecting Children Index. So we've used that as the starting point for where we think our most vulnerable children will be. And we know that those services are important there, but equally, we know that outreach is equally important. There was a question asked about how children are expected, how families are expected to travel to that building. They're not. The simple answer is they're not. The services need to go, Dr Povey, as you rightly said, they need to go where those children are. And if that's a local church, a local school, then it will come to them. And equally, if there are certain groups where postnatal depression, and that doesn't, you know, that doesn't map across to income, then the outreach needs to go to them, rather than think that a building is a place where they come to receive those services. There are some things that we are doing that are expanding the offer that we think will be better. So firstly, it will no longer be a not-to-five service, it's a not-to-11, because we know that children, as they grow up in those families, continue to have, continue to have needs. So we're extending the age range. Equally, in terms of our children's centre offer now, if a family goes to a children's centre and they don't have the right postcode, they're told to go away. We simply won't have that happen anymore. So families from Guildford could come to Waverley, Waverley to Guildford. We're not going to restrict them by their postcode, so we can move around. Just trying to make sure that I picked up. The point about staff and being proud of our staff and the services that they're offering, I think we are. And I recognise that there has previously been a consultation, that stopped, and now there's another consultation. But the world has changed. When we started a children's centre consultation before, we weren't looking at a family resilience model. We didn't have that framework in which to operate. So it likely would have been, stick with what you've got and reduce it. That's not what we're doing. And I appreciate that staff and, you know, and members as well are catching up with that. And our communication needs to be a bit more agile with that. But I can say that over the last week, there have been dedicated workshops with the staff in the children's centre, because we want them to really design what the outreach looks like, how it works, how they're going to deliver it. They need to own it. It needs to be them. They know the local communities, they know where the great church, you know, room is, and the head teacher who'll lend them, you know, lend them an unused classroom or whatever it is. So they are now designing, and I think they'll start to really understand it, and not simply understand it, be really quite excited about it. And early signs are that they are. I'm thinking I may well have answered most of those questions. If I haven't, please do pick me up on this.
Thank you for that. I'm sure some people may want to come back a little bit on that. Could I just ask, you know, I understand what you're saying about doing this outreach work, and that one its own sounds absolutely fine, but how are the families going to know that it's there? How do they get in to access it? How do they sort of find it? Or how are they found?
I suppose the answer is that we all have a role in terms of signposting families into the access that they can get. So our early help hubs will be a point of access and signposting into that, into the outreach. The health visitors, you know, in a sense, we've got a workforce that's out there. Housing officers that's out there that is able to signpost people into early help and through early help into those outreach support services.
Mr Edwards, first of all?
Thank you, Chair. I've got... I'm not sure how long you've been involved with the children's services, but I've been a schoolgoer 25 years in an outstanding school. And I know all the head teachers in my area, I speak to them quite regularly, I even know the, you know, the head teachers of the private schools. And none of them support the proposals being put forward by Surrey County Council. The proposals don't add up to what we have at the present time. We have lots of things going on in the centres. It's not just about somebody going there, they meet other people, they talk about what's happening, and they provide lots of services, a wheel of help. It's a circle where everybody meets and discusses their problems, et cetera. The whole issue is about the centre being the place to go when you've got problems, and they help solve it. It's a fantastic service. I know things have changed. You talk about Surrey children's services, youth services being inadequate. Yes, they've been inadequate. And the problem with that is the fact that they didn't get the right training and the right management in place to provide those services. That's the issue. It's Surrey County Council's issue. And I know you're trying to cut costs, but this is a retrograde step. We have something that really does work now. And if you want to visit Hazelmeir, the Tennyson Centre, you will be amazed. I know the manager there does outreach work at Cranley at the present time, helps over there, that's fine, okay? But there's somewhere for people to meet and go to when they've got a... Today, they've got a problem. This morning, they've got a problem, first thing they do, they go and see the manager, Rachel, the manager at Tennyson Shore Start. We must keep the services best we can. Keep the good stuff, but tackle the issues that aren't working. Now, if some of the centres aren't working, I don't know. But I happen to know that Tennyson's does a fantastic job, and I want to keep it, no matter what happens. Even though I reduce services, somewhere for them to go and meet and resolve their problems. Thank you.
Mr Spence?
Thank you, Chair. In a way, it's impossible to square the circle in this debate, because to the end of 2021, £833 million will have been taken out of Surrey's budget because of what central government has done to local authorities. So in a way, this debate, you know, if the specialists say you should do it this way, and the children's centres say you should do it the other way, and the community says you do it another way, none of it is absolutely correct and right, because with £833 million out of the budget, nothing is going to work properly. And that's only going to be resolved one or two ways: either Jeremy Corbyn will get elected and he'll put the money back in, or the Conservatives, to stop Jeremy Corbyn getting elected, will put the money back in. In the meantime, as we're having this debate, I think we've got to be very accurate in the conversation, because we've encouraged the community to involve themselves in these consultations. A lot of people are very cynical, why would we bother? Because the decisions have already been made. And Andy and I have been absolutely encouraging people, letters every week to the Farnham Herald, telling them to get involved. So when you say there about children's services in Surrey are inadequate, yeah, they are. But the children's centres aren't. They've had good and they have had outstanding in some of their Ofsted reports. And you've got to be very careful about mixing the two, because people know that those centres have had outstanding reports. So for Surrey, I'm on the board of Hale Community Centre, which is linked to the children's centre and linked to the Pramie School. I see your problem, you have to do things differently. But those institutions broadly at the moment work. What they've got works. And actually, if I went on to the other areas too, I think the Bus Sand, there's lots of things there that's good. So when the bath water is thrown out of, you're having to chuck the bath water out because there's going to be £833 million less to pay for it, you've got to make sure the baby is not chucked out with it. If you have to rejig, you have to reorder, then fine, but do not lose the good stuff that you've already got as you're trying to redo that.
Thank you. Now, in the interests of time, if we could keep further points reasonably brief, Mrs Rivers?
Thank you. I'd just like to speak up for children's centres as well, because it's a little point, but I think it's an important point. When you are in need, you don't always know you are in need. When you have postnatal depression, you do not recognise it. But you may go to a children's centre because you know other mothers are going there, and you can have coffee, and you can chat, and you learn to socialise and support each other.
Thank you. Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chair. I think there's a massive communications problem here. Some of the explanation I heard just earlier, I've not heard before, and I don't know why it's not written down and shared more widely. And I would point out to the both of you that you've only got a subset of the councillors for Waverley Borough Council here, and indeed, a subset of the county councils as well. So the fact you said it today doesn't mean the message has got through, even to all of the councillors. Listening, I think what I'm realising is that this isn't a cost-cutting issue. In fact, I heard Dave Hill, that's the director for this area, say he's not looking to save money, he's looking to spend the money more wisely. And indeed, adult social care and children's needs are two areas that are largely protected when I've been looking at their finances. Looking at our area, we don't seem to be closing any locations, just making some of them visited on outreach locations, and indeed, perhaps suggesting more locations will become outreach. But that is just not explained, at least not explained such that people are understanding it. And even the staff aren't understanding. And I'm glad you're having some communications with them, because right now, I think you're seen as not prepared, and that's mainly because people don't know. I think it's a desperate shame that the fact we've got massive savings to make, and that perhaps is true of the other consultations, you're being tarred with and it's the wrong brush.
Mrs Townsend?
Thank you. Not specifically about the children's centres, although I totally agree with what my fellow colleagues are saying, but just generally some feedback for you, from my residence in Cranley. Obviously, there are lots of things affecting people in Cranley. We've got a library which may be under threat, children's services, the recycling centre, and all of these things affect a lot of people. Now, the feedback has been that the survey questions are leading, and people feel they're just leading to an outcome that you've already decided, and that really, you know, there's a lot of feeling, especially with the recycling centre, all scenarios close down Cranley. So to be honest, there are no real options there for Cranley people. I don't doubt that everybody in this room wants to make things better and to have more efficient services. But my feeling is that, and speaking to people on the ground and people that work in the libraries, et cetera, is that this actual consultation is too high-level. It's being set by Surrey, but you're not engaging with people really on the ground that are delivering these services or receiving these services well enough, and you're not consulting enough with local organisations. As a town and parish councils, as a parish councillor, there was no opportunity for councils to respond. The consultation is based very much on individuals responding back, not for actual councils to respond back to particular questions. And the councillors are the people with their feet on the ground, they're the ones that mix with residents all the time, and they really know what's going on in their area. So I think unfortunately, what's happened is it's started too high-level up, you need to bring it down and speak to the people on the ground more, and speak to town and parish councils more, and who have their finger on the pulse as well for local organisation that are delivering a lot of voluntary services to residents. I also have had experience of the outreach work done as well within Cranley for some services for young people. And to be honest, as much as it was well-intended, and some of it was, you know, was okay, it didn't reach enough people. It was a lack of perhaps coordination, maybe a lack of supervision. It didn't really work in delivering what undoubtedly was good-intended services to local children. And there are some really good examples locally of what people are doing and delivering voluntary services for young people and for older people. And I just think you need to dig into that expertise. And it isn't always the people with all the letters after their names that know the best thing to do for our residents. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to just wrap up on children, and we'll then move on?
Yes, yes, I will. And just on that final point that Mrs Townsend made around the consultation and the format of it, and that's really helpful feedback, in some senses, it's very... Our five consultations are very different in terms of how they are set. Some of them have, as children's centres do, as the community recycling centres do, have definite proposals. They are proposals for consultation, but quite definite. But if you look at the SEND, and if you look at the library's consultations, they are, they're setting a strategy, they're setting a direction. So there are, you know, it doesn't have the detail that you'd have in the other consultations. And that can be confusing, I suppose, for people in that sense to understand. But we will accept, of course, we will accept responses from a parish or town council that's in the form of a written letter. It doesn't have to come in an online, you know, submission, or even indeed, a paper submission where you've gone through. A letter with your feedback on the questions that we ask, but also any other comments as we're getting in the room today, or any other intelligence that you might have about a local area in terms of housing growth, or, you know, communities that we might, you think we might not be aware of, would be really valuable. And it is a consultation. And it is a consultation.
Well, thank you for that. And following that, obviously encourage everybody to get their parish and town councils to feed into this. Okay, does anybody wish to speak particularly on bus passes? Mr MacLeod.
Thank you Chair. We happen to have a councillor who's involved with the disability area, he has disabilities himself, so we're taking quite an interest in this one. Just a couple of comments if we can make about it. The councillor's not looking to save vast sums of money in this area and a couple of the things they're doing seem reasonable. For example, I spoke to the officer, who is a very helpful guy, and he said they're proposing to stop advising people when their bus passes are due to run out and that will save something like £100,000 a year. That's not made clear in the consultation, but that seems like a good idea. No one should really object to that. In terms of the other cost-saving ideas, the council currently allows disabled passholders to use their passes before 9.30 and they're planning to cut that out and that will save something like £300,000 a year. Even David, who's the councillor concerned, thinks that's probably a reasonable idea, provided the council actually talks to the bus operators to see if they're prepared to offer concessions themselves at that time, which if they were, Surrey wouldn't be involved with that. The one that we're most concerned about and I'd like to get around to is the idea of taking away the concession that allows a carer or a friend to go along with the disabled person during the day. If that happens, actually, that will disadvantage, that really disadvantage people that aren't capable of travelling on their own. And that is the one thing that we think should not happen in this. Surrey doesn't actually know how much that would save them because in fact, the way the system works, a disability holder actually puts his pass in twice for himself and the carer and Surrey doesn't ever know how much has happened. But it's felt that it doesn't happen too often actually, that the sort of people who do this sort of thing, who need people to travel with them, obviously requires a fair bit of organising to do that. And we don't feel that Surrey are going to save very much money in that area. And that's the one area that would appeal to you not to do that. Why actually, I know that the council doesn't have to do this, it's a thing they do that's not part of the national scheme, but it's the one thing that we strongly feel shouldn't happen. You shouldn't take away the right for people to have a carer travel with them. Otherwise, people like that just won't be able to travel at all. They'll be stuck in their own houses, they're not people who have cars. Sorry, I know I'm going on a bit long.
Thank you, I think we've got the point there, the nicest possible way.
I can just take that feedback back. It is, as you pointed out, both those aspects, the travel before 9.30 and after 11 and the carers' passes are discretionary aspects of our offer in Surrey. And, you know, we're looking, we're clearly having to look at our discretionary spend and ensuring that, as Dave Hill has said, it's wisely spent. So the proposal's there, it's a proposal and we're getting quite a lot of feedback, as you might imagine, on that particular proposal.
Right, next, brief points on libraries. Mr Povey.
Well, I think as the officer said, the current consultation is a very high-level one and doesn't really say very much at all. So is there going to be a subsequent second consultation on detail?
So to set some context, we don't have a strategy for libraries and cultural services in Surrey. We've not had one, it's been noticed. And we thought before we did anything else, we should start and consult with our residents, library users and the wider community about what are libraries and cultural services for in a 21st century environment. And we think that the principles, the five principles that we've set out, they seem pretty good. We've had something like nearly 2,000, I'm looking for my number of consultation responses, we've had, no, sorry, 4,000 responses back on our libraries and cultural services consultation. And people are broadly supportive of libraries not being single-purpose. And in Surrey, we have a lot of single-purpose libraries. We have occasional multipurpose ones and if you go on our website, you'll see our former cabinet member responsible for libraries, Mary Lewis, talking about Cobham, where there are a whole host of services in there. You know, sometimes we have a CAB and sometimes we have a doctor's surgery, sometimes we have a children's clinic, but we haven't done that in a systematic way. We're in a, you know, a digital world now. My kids don't do anything if it doesn't come with an app. But we're not really fashioning our cultural services around a digital offer, which reaches some communities, some groups that aren't using our libraries because they're working. So actually, stretching the reach. So those principles are unashamedly not concrete around Cranley Library etc. However, when we start to think about, well, what does that mean for our library service? We will develop the proposals and we will then again consult. So there will be further consultation. This is the beginning in a sense. And we will work, you know, if we're developing a digital offer, we'll work with disabled groups, we'll work with working age people, we'll work with young people to help design what that looks like. So it is very much the beginning.
Thank you. Mr Pyam.
Thank you Madam Pyam. Yeah, well, I'm representing Bramley as well as Tashcombe and Buzzbridge of course. And Bramley has its community library. It's been running for about three or four years now. I'm one of the many volunteers that go in there on certain days. We have a very good system and we draw volunteers from a very wide area because people want to be involved. They enjoy the involvement of actually working, helping within a library service. And we've increased our numbers etc. What we're disappointed in at the moment, I mean, we've just, I think, renegotiated, continued our lease. We've been given a very short lease, a year, which starts to put concern into our mind as to what the future is. Why only a one-year lease? When we started with a three-year lease. And we've also ourselves recognised as a parish council that we ought to be, which the parish councillors are involved very strongly in this, to increase services. And one of the things you mentioned, the CAB. We're a village, not a town, and therefore the CAB service can't be very strong. We wanted to put in an information point system which would allow them, it's a development by the CAB which helps people who cannot get into the main service. And we're now told, I believe, by Surrey County Council, they want to charge quite considerable amount of money for us to be able to put a little terminal in the library. We don't recognise how this helps our community that way. It's, well, it seems on the face of it a rather strange requirement that you want us, when we pay a lease, we have a lease on that premises, not to be able to use it as we do for various groups, yoga groups etc, who come in and use the smaller meeting rooms that we have. So we're happy with what we're doing, but we're unhappy with what the future might be because of the short leases etc.
Mrs Townsend.
Thank you. Just quickly, it has been mentioned earlier, but Cranley, which we have our library at present, is a service centre for the surrounding villages as well, which don't have their own libraries. And as been mentioned earlier, we are looking at growth in the eastern villages of a huge amount. So we're looking at another village the size of Cranley. So approximately another four and a half thousand houses being serviced by our library. So I do really hope that there is, you can reassure me that when you are doing this consultation, that you are looking at the growth agenda for areas like Cranley. And also the wider use of libraries in helping to try and avoid isolation, social isolation because a lot of older people perhaps come into the libraries just for a chat and to use the, be helped to use the computer terminals because they might not have that facility at home. So there are lots of, I'm sure, other things that have to be considered when looking at libraries. But for Cranley, it is an aging population, a lot of older people and also an explosion of population, so doubling the size basically, that will need access to some form of library services.
Mrs Coburn.
Thank you Chair. And yes, I was a little bit horrified about some of the diversification of libraries. I agree, everyone needs facilities and I've said before, we integrate, but we also need culture. I mean, the way, as far as I can see, to diversify libraries is to increase the cultural aspect of it, not just stick a yoga class on and buy your sugar here and get your stamps there and, or you can have your feet down along the road. I mean, you know, libraries are there because they are very good. Councillor Townsend has just mentioned the socialising effect. But if you don't open the world, I'm going back to children again, if anyone would think I love them the way I'm talking about them. I do my best. But, you know, it is such an important part of life to say to children, there is literature, there is theatre, there is drama, there is poetry. And if we don't do that in our libraries, our schools are finding the curriculum very, very constrained at the moment, it's very, very difficult. But in this era, when we're all going around seeing our grandchildren and children in school plays, to see the pleasure that they get out of this and they're working together, libraries are much more than a building that has books and it's something that's been true for a long time. But we don't just go down the electronic line, we think imaginatively. I am horrified that you have no cultural strategy. I am horrified that you don't understand how important libraries are. Absolutely, truly horrified to me, they're an essential part of every child's growing up and we should be bussing them in, not giving them alternatives and certainly not filling the rooms with other services, which I agree have to find a home, but not please at the cost of our cultural gift, if you like, that we give to families and children. And whether that's just done over a coffee, as Councillor Townsend said, that is cultural in its own way. It gets people to talk and to listen to other people's opinions. So, you know, libraries should be improved, but not pleased by just diversifying in a very practical way. Let's keep a bit of culture in the borough, please.
Mrs Rivers. Thank you very much. Yes, Godwin Library has many and manifold different services, all based around books. And they have children's groups where children sit around and are read allowed to. That is fantastic. And also around these parts, there's been, I don't know if J K Rowling is to blame for this, but there are lots of book groups and the library here will get together 12 books of the same title or whatever. You know, the service to books has changed and adapts to local conditions and our libraries are vital.
Mr Ramsdale.
Thank you Chair. I'm just kind of motivated by the words from my colleague, Councillor Carol Coburn, and I'm hoping to reassure Carol that certainly one of us, and I think all three of us from Farnham have been talking and supporting, is the idea that Farnham Library, Farnham Museum and Farnham Maltings should be talking to each other, and at least two of the three are keen to do so, about co-locating and co-use of their buildings. And what's envisaged, I think, is that the library will open more often and do more performances and activities as well as just have books.
Over to you.
Thank you. I guess I'll start by saying, I should have said that our strategy around libraries and cultural services, we think is built around lifelong learning. So we very much see cultural services, libraries as part of learning through life. And I don't know if anyone's read the annual report of the Chief Inspector at Ofsted, Amanda Spielman, but she's written very movingly and very passionately about the importance of early literacy in children as being the absolute fundamental basis upon which children learn, become adults, become successful, fulfil their potential. There's those crucial moments in the early years that we need to get right. And so we fundamentally understand the importance of early literacy, but also learning through life. And I'll come back to the point that, sorry, I didn't catch the name of the councillor from Bramley who spoke first. Oh, he's gone, he's gone, oh, sorry. But he talked about volunteers in his library and he himself was a volunteer, about just under 700 Surrey residents volunteer in our libraries, something like 21,000 hours a year they give in our libraries. We know that it's really important. It's important for them, it's important, you know, for all kinds of reasons, not simply for delivering, you know, some services, but actually the experiences that it gives them, the, you know, isolation, they're connecting with communities. Interestingly, Surrey's CABs are now working really closely with Job Centre Plus. You may have heard of the rollout of Universal Credit. And so CABs are supporting residents in Universal Credit to get back into work or to extend their working hours. And one of the ways that they want to do that is by providing volunteering opportunities. So I think you can see where I'm going. You know, people on Universal Credit volunteering in our libraries, learning, gaining some skills in confidence as they do that, that is a bit of diversification, but it seems like the kind of diversification and the use of libraries, it is a really wise use and has multiple benefits for our communities. So just saying, more on libraries. And I don't know why the arrangement was offered to charge, that does seem a bit perverse and it may be because we didn't have a strategy that said multi-use, multi-spaces is a good thing and something that we want to incentivise, not disincentivise. So I think we need to come back on that and start to rethink some of those previous decisions about what we did and how we did it. That point about, you know, the growth of our communities, absolutely, and that needs to be thought of in terms of the libraries for the future. So actually, what does that growth look like? Some people, and some people who have responded to the consultation have said shut every library, it should all be online. So you probably should hear that, that's the views of some people. I don't think we'll take them up on that suggestion in that way. But what they're saying is that there is an unmet need there for more access through other channels, that's how people expect to get services these days. And I think I'll probably end on that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm conscious of time. Do I have questions on special educational needs and disabilities? Briefly, if you wouldn't mind, Mr Spence.
It's probably the most important thing that's happened to us for a while, so I think we just need to take a bit of time on it. On this, I've got a resident in my district who's part of the High Court Challenge and the allegation there was Surrey was cutting, I can't remember if it was 21 million or 23 million, yet when you look at the consultation document, it's very upbeat about adding extra money. And so I'd like to ask a question as to what is the actual situation about the High Court allegation that there was a massive cut when the consultation documentation says we're going to do more and we're going to put more money in? Because in talking to residents about getting them to contribute, it's hard to get the starting point with those two slightly different narratives.
So I'll preface this just a bit, in the same way that I did around the children's centres, by saying we have to do things differently in terms of special educational needs and disabilities. So it's a similar story. Children with SEND in Surrey not only do less well than children without SEND in Surrey, but really shockingly, they do less well when you compare them with children with SEND who live in other areas. So our children with SEND are poorly served here, the outcomes are not good enough. We cannot continue to do the same thing that we're doing. Parents, and the parents who are in the High Court will probably validate this, parents and children say their experiences of our services are equally poor. So they're having a bad experience. And we know that demand is going up and the funding isn't. And that High Court case, which we haven't yet had the ruling on, it's taking an awfully long time, in a sense was about that gap. What do you do when the money doesn't match the demand? Okay? It's not about taking money out, but it's what do you do about that gap? I'm going to leave that where it is because I want to talk about what we are proposing in this and there is a reason it's upbeat. It's because we are not proposing to take money out. It's because we are not proposing to take money out, we have a business case that's gone through Cabinet and council, which is about investing more money in. We recognise that too much of our spend is on the crisis end, the hot, you have to escalate to here before you start to get a service, and therefore it costs more, that we have to invest more in the prevention and the early intervention end. So the funding that we're putting in is in that early intervention and prevention. The proposals are around additional therapy, you know, you won't need to go to the statutory end, there'll be a graduated response, we're working with schools, we're working with SENDcos now, to really understand what those lower level needs look like and where we need to match the services and support to those needs. And there will be more EPs, there will be more therapy support coming in, specialist teachers coming in at that stage, whereas now they don't. And that's where some of the funding's going. Additional funding through capital spend is on additional specialist places in Surrey. We know far too many children, many more children than other places, are placed far, far away from home, often in independent sector provision, which is costly. It's not good for them, it's just not good for them. They don't grow up in their local communities, they travel long distances to where they're going, they lose their connection with their families and their friends. So we need the specialist provision in Surrey, and we're going to provide it, so we can place more children closer to home. So that is, it's easy to be upbeat about that. And that is, you know, Dave Hill's strategy, which is get the money for children, but spend it well, spend it really effectively.
Briefly, Mr Edwards, and then Mrs Coburn, and then we'll move on from this topic.
Thank you, Chair. I fully agree with regards to sending the children outside the area to specialist schools, et cetera, et cetera. I've always thought that, I've always said that at, you know, government's conferences. The issue I have, and the difficulty we're going to have here, is the fact that the send funding for each individual's child at the present time is unsustainable. Schools are under tremendous pressure in their budget, and the money provided, when they eventually get it, because it takes a long time to get to that stage where the funding kicks in, is affecting the performance of not just the educational needs child, but all the other children as well, because the funding that's needed has to come from the budget, the existing budget, and we're finding it very difficult to cope. Now, the school I'm chair of governor's at, we run a very tight ship, our budget's good, but there are other schools who are equally well-run and provide an excellent service are really struggling here, and we will struggle unless we review the funding for each child, because it isn't enough, it really isn't. So we need to look at that and decide, and we need to speak to professionals, we need to speak to the head teachers who are actually living this situation, and find out exactly what they're saying. And I think all the schools are responding to this, as far as I'm aware, in my area anyway, because we are very, very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, very briefly, you touched on it, that by putting children out of county or out of just their local area, you disadvantage them in so many ways. We're trying an inclusivity sort of initiative in Farnham at the moment to get children with special needs and disabilities into sport. And one of the issues we have is because so many of the children that come to our special needs school are not local, at 3.15 the buses come, they go home, and we cannot get these children to what we're trying to provide for them. So anything that can be done to get children with special needs and disabilities educated within or very close to their community has to be so good for everybody concerned. It's heartbreaking when you ask a school to come along, you've got an initiative, you want them to share it, and it's just the fact that they don't live in the borough and have to go home that puts the damper on it.
Over to you, Mr Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. I just didn't want to leave councillor Edwards in isolation in expressing the views he just expressed. It resonates so loudly, exactly what he said. Very few schools are going to be able to balance their budgets by the end of next year, the way things are going, and the reallocation of send responsibilities is loud and clear on the radar screen of people having to manage school budgets, it's a major issue. Thank you.
I will, I just want to acknowledge Mrs Coburn's comments, that's really, really helpful. You know, you've kind of illustrated in a nutshell one of the many facets, you know, disadvantages of children not being educated closer to their communities, just a very, very compelling example. I can't, I'm not sure I can add anything to comments about schools' funding, I think it's well-known that the funding's really difficult for schools, we are aware, we as a county council have discussed these proposals through the schools' forum, we've consulted with the schools' forum on these proposals. They were very positive about what we were proposing, because what we can, I think what head teachers can see is that that investment in support that they can access agilely when they need it for a child, as opposed to having to go down a long laborious process to hit a threshold for a child to be able to access some funding and some one-to-one support at that level, is just not, it doesn't work. So, you know, we are developing what we're calling our graduated response with SENDcos, so in our schools, they have thrown themselves into this, so it's really being designed with them and with schools. So we think we've got a better shot at getting a better system operating where the support is when schools, and importantly, the child needs it most earlier on, as opposed to later when it's costly and it's, you know, you're having to pass through statutory hoops.
Okay, thank you for that. Finally, we've already heard from Dr Povey about the Cranley Recycling Centre, I appreciate it, there's the whole of the Farnham Recycling Centre. If, I mean, I appreciate, you know, everyone's concern, if anyone, you know, I'm happy to let you speak briefly, but please, if somebody has already made your point, please don't repeat it, I don't, I think, you know, we accept that, you know, feelings are strong. Mr MacLeod.
We'll keep it, Chief Chairman. It's amazing that the Farnham Recycling Centre is in the bottom six, when we have 40,000 people, and it's frankly, it's because it's a very poor recycling centre, it's very badly run, it's not a good centre at all, and many of our residents are using Hampshire centres, that's the point I'd like to make. And they'll be prevented to do that in roughly a year's time, when Hampshire introduces number recognition systems to stop non-Hampshire residents using them. And many other points I made, but I'll just leave it at that.
Mrs Townsend.
Just very quickly, can I just make a general plea about the consultation on the recycling centre? People were very concerned that there wasn't any face-to-face opportunity to speak to officers within Cranley itself, and I think that there is a heavy reliance sometimes on digital responses and not enough on face-to-face, and I appreciate it might be expensive to come to different areas, but I think you may end up with better outcomes, and I think people do want to be spoken to face-to-face and to engage with you. And another bit of feedback was from the actual consultation in Godwin here, was that people were very disappointed there weren't any county councillors there, it was just officers. I don't know whether that was just at the particular time that my residents went in, but that was something that fed back. But please don't rely only on digital, you know, we need to speak to our residents and meet them face-to-face to appreciate the issues that they're facing, and especially with regard to things like the recycling centres. Thank you.
Mr Martin.
Thank you. Could I just reply about non-attendance of county councillors? I was there for about a half of the time that the two-hour session was on, that was the latter half rather than the first half, so if they arrived at 10 o'clock, I'm afraid I wasn't there. The only point that I would like to make is that we have a very fine recycling centre in my division, it's called Whitley, which I was very closely involved in creating. My only concern is that if other centres are closed, particularly Farnham and Cranley, then the increased usage is going to be very considerable in Whitley, and the extra car journeys and the extra congestion in my area will be harmful, and that's a major consideration for me. Thank you.
Mr Seaborn.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It'd be really nice to be assured that the view on recycling is holistic. We were told earlier on that use of Cranley has actually gone down, and that may well be the case, because it's only opened three days a week instead of the far more days that it was. But more to the point, fly tipping, which Waverley has to pick up the cost of, has gone up, and so the rubbish is still there, it's just not getting to the tips, it's ending up on the byways and the verges of Waverley. So a holistic picture here, so that it's not just shunting the cost elsewhere, rather than actually managing the recycling that needs to happen, it would be nice to be assured that's happening. Thank you.
Mrs Rivers. Thank you very much. I'd just like to echo the comments about Whitley tip that Peter Martin just made, and to say that I was there for the first hour of the consultation, and the residents I spoke to were all from Cranley.
Okay, Mr Ramsdale.
Thank you, Chair. The one little thing I'd like to say that hasn't already been said is, certainly at Farnham, and I suspect some of the other locations, what we need is some reinvestment so that people do use them, they don't go to Hampshire, and they're safe to use. The metal staircases at Farnham put me off going there, hence I use Borden in Hampshire. The volume at Farnham is hidden, especially with the new houses coming soon.
Thank you. Would you like to respond on that, please?
If I start with that last one first, I think I would absolutely agree, we'd love to reinvest, I think, in a new site at Farnham. We struggled really, a couple of years ago we were able to invest in quite a few of our sites, and we built the site at Whitley, took a little while, but we got there, and this is a great site, actually, it's probably one of our best sites. Issue at Farnham, it was never big enough to create that split-level site, so we were never able to invest in that site at that time. Actually, it's very difficult to find a new site, because waste is one of those things where I've been at a number of places where we've opened or tried to open new facilities, and we're equally, you get equal sort of feedback on in terms of new facilities, and closing facilities is obviously also something that's very controversial. But yeah, I mean, I think if we're in a different financial climate, then, you know, building a new site at Farnham would be certainly one of the things we'd want to do. You know, we know that site is not a great site, but we're just not in that position at the moment. You know, a new site's going to cost 1.5, maybe 2 million pounds to build, let alone the operational costs. In terms of extra traffic, absolutely, in terms of at Whitley, I just sort of echo what I said at the beginning, is that both the use and the amount of waste that we handle at our sites has gone down quite dramatically. So we've lost something like 55,000 tonnes of waste at our sites, and that hasn't appeared in fly tipping. Fly tipping is close to the county council's heart as well, because anything the borough picks up, the county council has to pay for the disposal of. So, you know, there's a vested interest in terms of the county council not wanting to create fly tipping. And generally, through the changes that we've implemented so far, we haven't seen any significant increase in fly tipping. And in fact, if you look at the tonnages that are collected by the Borough Council in Waverley over those three years, they've actually gone down. So although the number of incidents have gone up, so there's not necessarily a direct relationship, but, you know, we don't want to create fly tipping, and certainly that's one of the biggest issues that we've seen in previous consultations, and I suspect it will be in this consultation as well. Absolutely take your point about engagement, you know, we'll take that feedback back. Logistically, you know, I've got a team of sort of three people really, so engaging in a lot of locations is quite time-consuming, but we have been attending the drop-in sessions where there are, or the nearest to where the sites are proposed, and obviously the most controversial thing is sites proposed for closure, so we have been attending those sessions, but obviously we'll take that information back. And I think in terms of Farnham, I've already said, it's not, you know, it's not a paragon of virtue in terms of the site. We know there's some issues there in terms of the staff as well, you know, it's not what we would like to see. Generally, you know, other sites, you know, the staff are very engaging, I'm not quite sure why Farnham has always been a bit of an issue, but, I mean, the site itself is not great. And, you know, part of the strategy is that a number of sites that have been identified for closure are those older sites which are single level, which have to be closed when vehicles turn up. Whitley was very much like that at the time, but it's completely transformed now. So yeah, I think probably that's probably said enough.
Mrs Coburn, I apologise for missing you.
Yes, sorry, I've obviously had some of my answer. One thing I just wanted to say, Farnham Town Council's letter's on its way, I just want to reassure you that we're not forgetting. But my question really relates to the numbers back into Farnham. When we put 450 extra homes in Farnham, Surrey Highway has objected because of the road network from Farnham to Guildford. You are now suggesting that all these new houses, plus the lot of us that are already living there, so 40,000 homes, 20,000, 25,000, I don't know how many cars are going to be, have all got to take their rubbish along these roads that you objected to for the extra 450, because you said they were already crowded, into Guildford to take our rubbish? I mean, you know, no wonder the public think we're all crazy, you know, it doesn't seem to make any sense whatsoever. I know you've got no money, but the only answer is to improve the Farnham tip as soon as you possibly can.
Councillor Hess.
Mr Hyman. Okay, thank you. Yes, we did look at this, I have been looking at this at Environment, Environment and Scrutiny Committee meetings, so councillor Hyman, councillor Ramsdale, will also recall that the problem that we're getting, Richard, Miss Parkinson says that quite correctly, that we don't seem to have had a massive increase in the amount of fly tipping that's been caused by the shortened number of days, the reduced number of days of the Farnham and Cranley tips. But what we have had is a quite significant increase in the amount of contamination, they call it, at the Brink sites, which are Village Way, Upper Heart Car Park in Farnham, and Central Car Park, those sorts of sites where you can take your cardboard or your boots or your, you know, or the rest of it. So there is a knock-on effect, and I don't need to repeat what Carol and Andy have said, but certainly the idea of, you know, the cost of, a large part of the cost presumably of operating the Farnham site is transporting the containers to and from Slyfield, and instead we're going to split that up into thousands and thousands of cars, is absolute madness. And yes, we do need to look urgently at creating a better site for Farnham, because the idea of having no CRC in the largest town in the borough, I mean, it's uncivilised, isn't it, quite frankly, and short-sighted, and I hope you have hundreds of thousands of people reiterate that. Thank you.
Would you like to just finish off on that?
Well, I think, I think absolutely right, I think Farnham has, we've got the biggest response, I think, so far from Farnham, so that will obviously, when the report is written for members, that will be part of that response.
Right, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mary and Richard, for coming, for that, you know, really being able to share with us some additional information that I think we didn't necessarily have before, I think that's been really useful. So obviously if we'd like to go, that's absolutely fine. We now move on to the parking review.
There is a resolution.
I'm so sorry.
I'm going to be pretty, this time.
Okay, so would you like to, committee, could I ask that you note this recommendation on the consultation? Thank you.
Can we ask that the comments are passed on?
Sorry.
Will the comments be passed on as part of the consultation?
Will the comments be passed on as part of the consultation? I believe they will be, that these officers have taken copious notes during this morning session, and that they will feed that into their, you know, bigger piece of work. Yes?
Thank you, Chair. In my role as a county councillor, I think at some stage I'm going to be on the receiving end of the CRC feedback. I was similarly on the receiving end of consultation feedback about waste centres in the county. It absolutely matters.
It absolutely matters, the volumes, in my view, of objections, of comments that are made electronically into the system. So please, if you're talking to people, do get them to record, use the formal consultation process, not just make their comments verbally at the centre, because it doesn't count the same in the maths. Thank you.
Thank you for that helpful point. So moving forward to parking, as you'll see, we've got many pages of parking and those of you, the longer-serving members, will recall some very, very lengthy debates going through the parking review in the past. So what I think I would like to do, well, first of all, deal with just those, the questioners from earlier, and then I will go round by division. If you're happy, I really don't need you to say anything and it's only if there are any actual particular problems that we need to hear about it, and it may be that it's more sensible to take them away individually, to deal with Jack, the whole committee doesn't need to hear the ins and outs of, you know, little bits of yellow line. So I hope that's acceptable to everybody. So first of all, we promised an answer to councillor Bolton and Paul Follows. Would you like to just repeat your supplementary question to Jack now that he's here, please?
Just a moment, Madam Chair.
Sorry, the supplement, sorry. The supplementary question was actually about the monitoring that was discussed at the end of the reply. And we just wanted to understand and get some clarity as to whether that monitoring had started and there was some reporting on it, or whether the monitoring needed to start so that we can understand what the actual situation is. Thank you.
And who was going to do the monitoring? Who do you expect to do the monitoring? Presumably Surrey County Council.
Yes, hello everyone. Firstly, thank you for waiting, I'm sorry that I had to wait so long. Yeah, well, really, the monitoring is really parking team in terms of parking restrictions because it's a parking issue, so it'd be us, it'd be the parking team looking at it occasionally, you know, next year to see if the parking's got any worse, or if it's shifted around or that sort of thing. So it really just, the monitoring was myself and the parking team to do that, yeah, as and when we can.
Time of day, morning, daytime, evening is important up there. The cars and the parking of cars does vary quite dramatically, so it was important that you don't go round at 12 o'clock in the middle of the day.
Yeah, yeah, I will be able to look round in the evening. I mean, it was a very difficult situation to deal with that Oxford Ridge one because it's, obviously it was assessed as part of the review, and I'd looked at it personally and spoke to some residents who I saw in, just in their front gardens at the time about the parking that was there. But it's that sort of area, as I said in my answer, it's completely unrestricted, there's no restrictions there at all. And, you know, when we draw up yellow lines, we've got to think, if we stop parking here, are these cars simply going to shift to the opposite side of the road? Are they going to move to that junction? Are they going to move to that bend? Are they going to start parking outside those people's houses over there? You have to think about all that sort of stuff. And that Oxford Ridge green area, you could justify lining about 70 to 80% of all of that. There's so many bends, junctions, you've got the island itself. So it was very difficult to start a proposal there knowing that we could manage the displacement. The displacement was, for me, was completely unmanageable really, and I felt I need to know more about the problem first, as I said in my answer.
Yeah, if you could copy us in on any reporting of that monitoring, that would be very helpful, both of us. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for that, Jack, that's helpful. Now, if I'd like to turn to page 36 of the paper agenda, to the parking restrictions proposed in Farnham North. Mr Spence, do you have anything brief to say? Are you happy with the proposals?
I just had a quick question because the yellow line was kicked off with a petition that came to the last meeting. I thought a report was coming back to this meeting, but I can see I was wrong. I'm just checking that that Alma Way then just gets looked at in the same way as any other request for a yellow line and then a report comes back in the fullness of time along with the other ones, yeah?
So Alma Way in Farnham, the bend parking issue?
It's the bend, yes.
Yeah, so there's a proposal in this report to double align the outside of the bend, so that will be advertised and hopefully installed next year, so that's already done in this review.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Mr Spence, just to clarify, that, yes, it is being advertised and assuming there aren't thousands of objections, it will go ahead. Right, Farnham Central's got a number of roads.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two or three points, but I don't think they're of general interest to the committee, so I'll take them up with Jack separately, fairly minor points.
Thank you very much. Farnham South, no proposals. Hazelmere, nobody here from. Waverley Eastern Villages is mine and I'm happy with, I've pointed out Mr Cranley.
I'm just disappointed that Park Drive was not included in the locations that you're going to go ahead with because there was a question of just extending the airlines by the junction.
Yes, I did look at that several times, actually. As you know, we've added to the double lines recently there on the bridge and, I mean, you could certainly justify extending that line, but we also have to be aware that there are residents that live there and they are, they want to be there in quite large numbers. There's a lot of flats around there and everything and we didn't really want to, we didn't feel it's necessary to push that any further than we've, bearing in mind the amount we've done in previous reviews there, thought it was sort of pushing it a bit too far and residents probably would have objected to that. And you can manoeuvre there fairly and the sightlines aren't that bad, so it was difficult to justify doing even more there than we'd already done, bearing in mind that people still have to live there.
Okay. Sorry, Mrs Townsend?
Thank you. And thank you for, to Jack, for all his help with the parking review around the common. Just one thing, there's a comment within the report about needing the feedback from residents, and I just wondered what form that's going to take and if you've got a timeline on that. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with that comment about feedback from residents.
So it says on page 43, the proposed layout should be supported by the majority of residents. Well, we've already done that consultation and residents have come back, so this seemed like you were waiting for further clarification.
No, that's me saying that I believe what I've proposed will be supported by the majority of residents based on everything I know up to this point. I know there are still some residents who aren't happy with that proposal, I've got to tweak it ever so slightly when we advertise it, I think, but that'll be after the sort of objections have come in from those residents I already know about. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Godleming North. Okay. So Godleming South.
Thank you. Could I just say thank you very much for some very good responses to the needs of additional parking restriction in my area. The only other street that I would like to register concern with is Oak Dean Road, and I just wondered whether you've thought anything further, Mr Roberts, on that, and this is in response to some of the car parking by students at the sixth form college.
Yeah, Oak Dean, I think I was one of the ones that did look at, I mean, the college, I looked at everything around the college and I visited, spent quite a lot of time there and had to determine the most important things. And the double lines that I've drawn up as everything was supposed to be the highest priority in terms of safety and access, but I can look further into Oak Dean in the future, yeah, as part of that. But yeah, the Godleming College does have a number of issues and I feel like I've addressed the most sort of dangerous, obstructive ones in that whole area from my assessment, so.
Thank you. I mean, this is a dialogue, we've been on with this for a long time, but I'm very grateful for what has been proposed, it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So could we now move to the recommendations? So I think if everybody's happy to take that as one, do you agree with that? Great, thank you.
Madame Chair, well, I might say, I think in all the years that I've been on this local committee, that was the fastest parking review that I can remember. The last one we had, I think, took several meetings and it was very difficult.
Well, maybe we can be as quick with the highways report. I'll hand over to Frank.
Thank you, Chairman. The, on page 95, in the recommendation, I have reminded members that at the last committee we did stipulate that the date of the 31st of December 2018 would be the cut-off date for the funding, because this committee have allocated this year a substantial amount of money to localism, and I'm conscious of the fact that the parishes and town councils do need to spend that money this financial year, otherwise it will be lost. So we have put this deadline on them, I have recently written to all of them reminding them of that deadline, and I would encourage you all to remind them further to ensure that that money is spent on your behalf. In addition to that, I'd like to just highlight on page 96, at the bottom there, the 2019-20 highway budgets, as has been discussed quite extensively tonight, this morning. The county council do have quite an enormous funding gap to find over the next few years. The budget for this committee next year is going to be somewhat different to what it has been in the past. There will not be, or at the moment, there is, the, what has been approved so far, and that obviously depends on finalising what has been spent this year, et cetera, but at the, this present moment in time, there will not be a revenue budget next financial year, but there will be a share of a £2 million capital budget for this committee, which amounts to circa £180,000 for next year. When I wrote this report this time last year, there was a commitment that the highway fund that was introduced this year would be increasing to 10,000 per member. That again, won't be the case, but there is the presumption that it will be carried forward and there will be additionally next year, £7,500 per member again. That is the only revenue fund that will be available to this committee, so I think, yes, we need to spend that very wisely. And that really is all I want to say on that report at this point in time, but yeah, any questions?
Mr Spence?
As you know, Frank, my knowledge of these budgets is very intensive, so I've got to come and ask you for the details, but can I just ask you one thing? Given those changes to the budget next year, with all the conversations you know about, about Jeremy Hunt's pedestrianisation stuff in Farnham, and part of that was the traffic survey for the upper hill road, what happens to that? Is there still going to be money available to do that? Or does that get subject to this money being cut and there starts to be a question mark on it? Because the Jeremy Hunt stuff isn't advanced to the point where something's being actioned, but I want that traffic survey done as soon as I can, yeah?
Any such surveys which require revenue funding would either have to come out of your £7,500 of revenue or from the committee's parking surplus?
Mr Martin?
Could I just ask about the £2 million capital maintenance? Will that be split between each councillor? Is that the proposal, as I think we've done this current year?
Yes, my understanding is that, again, as it was last year, it will be divided equally by 11.
Mrs Townsend?
Thank you. As previously, I've requested the Section 106 monies for the individual areas. I know that I've requested before the money that is available within Section 106, we've got our PIC table on page 97, but the following comment then for the Section 106 agreements, that the money isn't there, and it does rather exasperate me slightly because there are obviously works that have been secured under Section 106 or 278 or whatever it is, and I am unable to keep tabs on them myself, and residents do ask me all the time, when is the, you know, when are the 30 mile an hour signs going to go on Amlet's Lane? I know that we agreed to the reduction in speed limit, but people want to see those signs up to make sure that it's safe for people, for the children to cross there. And also within Section 106, and I know this is again, an issue that I've been chasing now for some months, about the improvements to the south side of the High Street, which were included in the conservation area appraisal, which I, you know, that, there is some money there, the first stage payment has been made, but it's very scant on details as to what is going to happen with that money and what project it's actually going towards. And residents are constantly saying, what is happening with the infrastructure? We're seeing housing, we're not seeing anything, and to be honest, you know, I can't keep track of all these projects in my head, I need a report issued to me, I need to know what money's being secured, I need to know when it's due to be triggered so I can tell my residents and keep them informed, and I need to know how much money is there as well. And, you know, I keep banging on about Section 106, I need to know, to pass on to my residents what money is available and where it's going and how it's going to be spent and when. Please, thank you.
Can I just endorse that, because that's the same point I wanted to make, that the Section 106 seems to be incredibly difficult to keep track of, and it would have been helpful to have that listing in the report, I think, yeah?
I've got the same issues, as soon as I'm informed of that money being made available to us, it appears in the report. TDP, our Transportation Development Planning Team, in consultation with the Borough Council, deal with those negotiations. Once they inform me that that money is available to this committee, it appears. Although, having said that, I am aware of an email that was sent by Richard, I think you were copied in, I can't recall, of some of the monies that is coming through, that hasn't made its way through, but it is starting to come through, and I think he did identify some of those funds to you.
Frank, do you think perhaps for the next local committee, you've got this table here of PIC amounts by ward, could we have, I appreciate there may be other things in the offing, but could you at least manage an up-to-date list as far as you're aware of where we are, albeit that there may be, you know, there are other developments that are at an earlier stage, but that would at least be a way for members to, you know, keep an eye on what is, what is going on and what they're getting out of these developments?
You may recall, I did actually do that at the last committee, so that information was made available. I haven't done it this time because obviously I haven't got the very latest information, so that was the latest I had at that particular time.
No, that was helpful, but I think it would be, it's a useful running total for us to keep, you know, as a sort of standard bit of the highways report, if you could add that, that would I think be very helpful. Yeah.
Specifically on this, I thought at the last meeting, an action was agreed to update that report, for example, with regard to the Section 106 money coming in from the Borden scheme to help with the A325 and A31 around Farnham. So that it isn't here now seems to me to be a forgetfulness, somewhere either of a minute in the notes or an action against the minutes.
Mr Seaborn?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just expanding on the theme of reliable, consistent, up-to-date information, on the PIC table on page 97, we've got here the allocated funds. Last, at our last meeting, we got the unallocated funds. I can't help thinking it'd be just rather nice to have it all, maybe just as an appendix to the report on a current running basis so that, you know, I looked at this table and I thought, that doesn't tally with the one last time. Oh, okay, this is allocated, last time it was unallocated. Can we just have the whole lot there in an appendix, kept current, and then we know exactly where we stand? And also on, also page 97, foot of it there, I think, this is just wording, but it says, however PIC funding can only be used in the ward where it's collected and cannot be used in other areas. And then the next sentence says, however, to simplify the expenditure remaining, of remaining PIC balances, intended to amalgamate this by division. So which sentence is correct? The first one says that it has to be spent somewhere and the second sentence says we're going to change that. I think this is just English, but it would make it clearer how we can go about spending this money. Thank you.
They are both correct, because as you're aware, in Waverley, you will be starting to collect SIL from next year. These amounts that have been collected by ward previously are quite small amounts. These amounts that have been collected by ward previously are quite small amounts and to make them a little bit more meaningful, they are amalgamating all these small amounts and then compiling them by division to make them a little bit more meaningful. So both of those sentences are correct, the first one being the previous methodology, but we have upgraded that to ensure that that money can be spent meaningfully ahead of the SIL started to be connected.
Councillor Hyman.
Thank you. And, and just to finish off that point there, so that's already been done from now on, they are now amalgamated, so now Councillor Ramsdale, for instance, can spend Bourdon money in Rowledge if necessary or whatever, for instance, which is because that's the only place with any real amount of money. Godleming Holloway's got a bit, of course. Okay. On the following page, to that, on page 98, this is just, no criticism whatsoever, but just as a matter of accuracy, it's 2118, the third paragraph down there, 2118, says that all Section 106 agreements will effectively cease in Waverley with the exception of Dunstfold and whatever. Of course, that's absolutely correct, Frank, in terms of transport or transportation income to Surrey County Council and for education and other, other incomes that Surrey would normally see, but two-thirds of the borough, particularly Farnham, a third of the borough is affected by SBA issues and there will be Section 106 agreements going forward for as long as we can foresee in respect of collecting money for Natural England and for Sang's management. So that isn't strictly true, what it says there, but if that can just be noted. On the next page, Farnham redevelopment works, we've addressed this before and Chairman, you know that I've been asking and trying to get answers out of this for quite some, some time in respect of the modelling of the Royal Deir Junction, whether we could see the modelling that was done and, and actually work out what Crest Nicholson did model when they borrowed the, the paramedics' software under licence from Surrey County Council 10, 15 years ago now. They borrowed it between 2004 and 2007, eight, I understand. We would like to thank very much, Frank, for what he did at last meeting, because at the last meeting, page eight, at the top of page eight in our agenda, points out that a Surrey leaflet that had come through our doors told us that works by Crest Nicholson on the bypass of a lane closure were planned for 24 hours and Mr Appicello very kindly looked into that. We have managed to avoid having a potentially disastrous gridlocking of the town in advance of Christmas and we really do thank the county council for stepping in there, you know, also with our work through the, through the planning committee, we managed to avoid that. But I would like to ask that, again, at the beginning of, if you look at page one, at the bottom of page one of this report, where I wanted to know whether we would be able to look at the modelling of the, of the Royal Deir Junction and we were told at the last meeting that it was a planning matter. I don't remember us being told that, but it says here in the minutes, we were told that it was a planning matter, not within the remit of the local committee. Of course, it's a transport matter, it's the basis of our air quality action plan and it's already been consented, so it's not a live planning matter, it's something which we do need to know about. And what I'd particularly like to, perhaps for Christmas or something, have a little bit of an update in terms of what is Surrey County Council's positioning on the feasibility of the works that are proposed, because this goes along with what, certainly what Stephen behind me has said, in respect of Jeremy Hunt's proposals, they need to work with the proposals that are already consented for Crest Nicholson. It's a big issue for Farnham, we can't move forward until we know, you know, what we've got that is going to be installed, whether or not the Royal Deir Junction, Crest proposals and pedestrianisation of E Street is going to go ahead. It's time we knew. I wonder whether Frank could possibly tell us of what progress and negotiations are going on, if he knows, because this is supposedly going to be installed in less than a year's time, is this pedestrianisation, and we haven't yet seen the modelling, so, you know, so that we can move forward with our air quality action plan and know where Farnham is heading. Is there an update or can I ask you perhaps, Chairman, to address this with me out of the, because, you know, I have brought this up many times and I don't want it to go on forever, we're going to run out of time and, can I ask Frank, please, whether we have had any, whether he's aware of how far the negotiations with Crest are and whether feasibility, you know, whether we're actually going to go ahead with E Street pedestrianisation? Thank you.
In a word, no. My only dealings with both Crest and Barclay Homes has been to facilitate the demolition and the hoarding works. All the other works have already, as far as I'm aware, apart from Barclay Homes, who I don't think have received full planning permission yet from the borough, are still with the borough. So as far as I'm concerned, I am sort of working on a sort of enabling basis with them to facilitate their works, but any other works are wholly and purely planning related.
Mr Ramsdale.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to raise a number of questions and points, I've got five points in all. First of all, page 96, against parking surplus, we've got brackets, 15% top slice of the 520k. I understand that, we've had lots of debates before about how this money gets separated out, but the 520k, what exactly is that? Is that the amount of money collected from parking in the borough in year or is it some sort of accumulated balance? Question two.
Could you just, where exactly does it?
Page 96.
Yes.
The top of the two boxes held it up as committee budget.
Yes.
Fourth line down is parking surplus.
Okay.
Brackets 15% top slice. Is the 520 an in-year amount or is it some sort of accumulated balance?
Okay.
Item two, page 97, the very top line, which is a sentence that runs on from the previous page, says allocation will be shared equally. Given that as a county, we're objecting nationally that we get an allocation for funding of roads that isn't fair, is equally split between 11 districts and boroughs fair? Because certainly as Waverley, we must have the massive amount of roads, given how big we are relative to the other divisions and boroughs. Turning over the page to paragraph 2.1.18, page 98, correct if I'm wrong, but going forward, Section 106 agreements are not limited to large strategic sites, although that's probably the best example. I thought some of them were also potentially small or medium sized, where, and the issue was actually where there is something that has specifically got to be done to enable the site to happen. So it could be quite small, but it needs some work done on the road and therefore a Section 106 agreed. Fourth bullet point, it links to Councillor Hyman's observation, which is paragraph 2.6.2 on page 99. I wonder if we could have an update on when the disruption is going to happen to the A31, i.e. the Farnham bypass, because those lorries are going to roll up some stage. Maybe I've just had that then. And then five is to thank you for the funds that have been pushed in at para 2.7.5 on page 100. I think perhaps four will get a quick answer, five doesn't need one and the other three will be interesting. Thank you.
Frank?
Page 96, the £520,000, that was a figure given last year as being the cumulative total for which the 15% was applied to arrive at the £78,000, which was then equally shared between members to give you each £8,666. Yes, I agree, in terms of the equality of that £2 million being shared equally is not totally fair. It hasn't been carried out last year, it was carried out in years gone by, however, that's not my choice. So you'd have to take that up with your other cabinet colleagues. Yes, the Section 106 is, in terms of what I've said in 2118, is wholly in respect to this being a highways update, there will be other Section 106s collected but not, that will then form part of this highways update for members to show them that there are Section 106s available for them to spend on the public highway. Any others that are collected may well be Section 278s, which are where developers carry out works themselves on the public highway. Yes, the 262, I think Councillor Hyman is absolutely correct, the date that the A31 is due to now commence is the 7th of January for the works for the Brightwells.
We don't know how long, but they're saying about six weeks or something like that to finish it off from the 7th of January. It is still challengeable as within a six-week, six-week challenge period and there's an NMA, two NMAs going through, changing the working method statement. What's most important to us, I think, is if we can ask Frank what sort of monitoring is proposed, because obviously if it's, if the 24-hour closure completely gridlocks the entire area for getting on for 24 hours a day, obviously not in the middle of the night, but certainly during the rush hour periods, which is the fear, and it's just so horrendous for the whole town and for our retailers that something has to be done, you know, what is there, is there a step-in procedure where Surrey County Council will say, right, okay, remove this for now, we've got to work something else out? Or are we just going to put up with it regardless?
If it becomes that bad, the police will actually come in and ask for it to be removed. But our street works team will do the best they can to ensure that the, the works are programmed and mitigated to ensure that they cause the least amount of disruption possible. But if the worst came to the worst, the police do have the powers to step in and remove roadworks from the public highway.
Dr Povey, did you have a further question? Okay, well, I think we can now move to the recommendation, which is on page 95. Are those recommendations, little one and little two, agreed? Thank you very much. You'll see on page 107, there's an item on school travel plans, which is really for information on their annual progress report. If you have any questions on the report, please, would you pass them to Yvette, who will seek an answer from the report author, if the officer's not able to be present today? Which then means we can move on to item 14, the local committee decision tracker. This is a standing item to review any outstanding committee decisions. Are there any comments on that, please? Could I ask if the committee agrees that the first two items relating to the Waverley Parking Review 2017 and the Whitley Schools petition response can now be removed from the decision tracker? Thank you. And then we just move to the forward programme, which is on the very last page. Be grateful if you would review the programme and let the committee know if you have any suggestions. The date of the next meeting, yeah, not, just the top of the page talks about the next meeting being on the 15th of March. I'd just like to draw to your, draw to your attention the fact the date has been changed and it is the 22nd of March. Yes, Dr Povey.
On the forward plan, I wonder if we could pick up Mrs Ames's point right from the beginning of the meeting about any update on negotiations or discussions around it being a joint committee?
I'll certainly put that on the programme. Mr Martin? No? Mr Ramsdale?
It's not so much as specific for the forward programme, because I investigate, we're already booked to have Hindhead Tunnel come back in a year or whatever the time interval is to update us. I just wonder if we could think about how usually, when we meet quarterly, we have last-minute minutes in front of us and can carry forward actions. I think there's a number of things that we left with the Hindhead Tunnel people to go away and do that were recorded in the minutes and if there's some way we could bring that to our attention or have that, like the extract from page seven, the minutes of last time, kind of given to us with the papers, if there are any, from Hindhead Tunnel? Because as you recall, I objected to the fact that we didn't get an answer to the question we'd raised a year prior at the last minute, at the last, last meeting.
I agree with that suggestion. I'll have discussed with Yvette how we could best manage that going forward. And without further ado, amazingly, at 1:05, I call the meeting closed and I wish everybody a happy Christmas.